Thanks for coming to the regular city council meeting.
I owe her these rights.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's great. Yeah. It's really good.
We'll call, everyone's here, welcome back.
Thank you. I brought you all souvenirs, but I left them on the plane.
Were they empty?
So thoughtful.
Oh, okay. Mike is not here. We have a fill-in tonight. Thank you for coming.
The other mic.
Approval of the minutes, June 12th, 2017.
I have a correction. I'm on page three, and it's the 10th line from the bottom. And if we look at that 10th line, it starts with includes the funding, period, and then we need to have added. My second comment deals with the Chicken Little letter from the city attorney about the sky is falling if we did not approve by a certain date. Also on page five, one, two, three, fourth, one, two, three, fourth line from the bottom, the line starts, record, she would be leaving early for a work engagement. Next, Kurzweil stated that would be a lie, Mr. Widdell, which you have a habit of doing. And that's it for me. Thank you.
I think adding the "Mr." to that would be amending the minutes. That was not, that's not the verbatim.
Yeah, well, I listened to the tape.
Who else?
No.
I'll move as amended.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Approval of the bills?
John, I have a comment on the bills, if I may, even though there's none.
Last city council meeting, we approved bills for Johnson-Rizzotti Law Firm, and it wasn't until today that we actually received the details, knowing what we even voted on or approved. So I think, I mean, normally during the approval of the bills, ideally, we would have these details of the attorney invoices at the time of approving it, but since we don't have them, unfortunately, we're in a situation where we don't know what was approved, and we need to review them. And I have some questions on the attorney invoices, so I would like to ask them now if there's any objections. Okay. There's a few, so bear with me here. The first is on page two. There are several entries from 410, 2017, 419, 424, just regarding attending council meetings. And I know when we talked about the budget, we discussed how other municipalities have other models, such as Salem Township, where the city attorney doesn't attend city council meetings. And I've noticed that the past couple council meetings, we do have our city attorney, so I wasn't sure if we had a consensus from council to have it as needed, or if it's going to be every city council meeting, we'll have an attorney here. I don't.
I thought we left it up to the city manager.
All right. Okay. So Lynn, I guess my question's for you. Is that going to be, do you anticipate having every council meeting, city attorney present, or will it be?
No, I don't. In fact, Tim and I discuss it before the packet is put together, whether or not his attendance is going to be needed. With the discussion this evening on the vacation buyback and the personnel policy possibly being amended, that is why he's here this evening.
Okay. I would think from council, we would be able to handle it because we are the policymakers. I would think policy would be able to handle that, but that's just my personal opinion. But thank you for asking. That clarifies it'll be as needed. Thank you. Next is page four, at the bottom entry on 43, 2017. There was a telephone conference with council member Kivell regarding council agenda matter. I'm just curious what the council agenda matter was.
I can try and address that. I don't remember what it was about. I don't remember what was on the agenda for that upcoming meeting.
Okay. That's disappointing that we don't have that details, but I'll move on. Next is on page five. There are several entries for the, involving the facade grant improvements. There's multiple entries, also on page six. Over two or three hours now, we scrapped the facade grant program, so I just wanted to point out that I think it's unfortunately some wasted time. I just wanted to make that for the record, since that was removed.
But can I? The bills were back in April.
I know, but it, here, it's neither here nor there. Next is on page six, from 413, 2017. There was a meeting, attending meeting with the city manager regarding code enforcement issue, 1.2 hours. I was just curious who that meeting was with, and if it was necessary to have legal advice there at that particular meeting.
It was with the city manager. I believe Carmen may have been there as well, because we met with him after that.
Do you recall what you reviewed specifically, or what the issue was?
Code enforcement matter regarding a potential hoarding circumstance.
Hoarding. Okay. Because in the future, I'd prefer that maybe, Lynn, we could, instead of an hour and 20 minutes, or 1.2 hours, you could maybe send an email and make it 10 minutes or something like that, and not have somebody face to face?
We did send an email. It had gone through, and we were working based on a resident complaint, so that we could work with that resident and their homeowner's association, as there were several residents in the development concerned about the safety, health, and welfare of a resident because they were hoarding in their terms, and were concerned because it was a shared wall situation.
Yeah. No, I'm just saying, you know, maybe it wasn't, I don't know. I don't know the situation. That's why I'm asking if it was necessary to have Tim here, but if you're saying it was the city attorney, then, okay, that answers my question. Next, I have a question on page seven, from 421, 2017. There's an entry for 0.5 hours legal research regarding the budget process. I'm just curious if that was regarding the Chicken Little letter, if that's what that budget research was regarding?
Well, first off, if it's the 421.5 hours, there's a no charge for that. It's related to get me oriented on the budget issues facing the council.
Did that involve the letter, the Chicken Little letter?
I don't know if it was related to the quote-unquote Chicken Little letter, where I advised council regarding its issues, the various legal issues facing the city following its failure to adopt a mill levy.
Okay. Where, do you know where that letter is in the bills here? If it's in the bills?
I didn't bring the letter with me. I don't remember the exact date of it.
May 24th.
So that, okay.
So that research may have contributed to, was probably related to that issue.
Okay. And we say no charge, though. I mean, even though it's billed, it still would accumulate towards the hours of the retainer, correct? Towards your 80 hours of retainer?
I, I, I understand your question. I don't know the answer. I would have to ask my bookkeeper.
Okay. Just to be clear, if, when it says no charge, once you hit over 80 hours, it goes into, from retainer fat, flat fee to billable hours. So my point is that even though it says no charge, it still does count towards the hours that eventually would bump up for a higher price tag.
I understand your point. I would certainly, I will double check and make sure that we're not counting those hours if they're not being charged.
And then next, page eight, from 424, 2017. There was a telephone conference with city manager regarding council agenda items. I'm just curious if you knew which council agenda items.
Which page are you referring to?
Page eight, at the top of the page, the entry from 424, 17.
I don't recall. So what was the next nearest council meeting related to the 424 date?
I'm not sure. That's what I'm asking.
I assume that was related to the issues coming into the budget issue.
My last question is on page 10. There was a few, three entries at the bottom for personnel matters. And just, it just prompted me to think about this question. Is there, I know you have other attorneys in the Johnson-Rizzotti Law Firm that specialize in, let's say, labor law, or whatever the case may be that you bring in. Do you have an attorney that does personnel, employee personnel, that perhaps would be for the same, under retainer, that could actually do that work? Because that may be more specialized.
We do have people that work with, that do employment law, and that often, now, personnel is different than employment law.
Okay.
And one of the things that is present in Southland is there is not a designated HR or human resource person.
Right. I'm just wondering if there's somebody else that could.
We could ask questions to deal with personnel and human resource issues. I oftentimes, because I don't practice regularly in that area, go to attorneys in my office and seek advice, and have them provide additional input on personnel matters, to the extent that it deals with HR issues, or things that I may not be as familiar with.
Okay. No, I'm glad, I mean, because it's billed under you, so you may have done this, because...
Well, if it was billed with my initials, then I did the work.
Okay. And that's what I'm wondering, if maybe we should have somebody as a designated, somebody who's designated from Johnson-Rizzotti, who does personnel, because I'm looking at how the conflict of interest was handled, and perhaps maybe we need to talk about getting an expert just dealing with personnel matters. But I guess that's a discussion for council as a whole, so. That was all I had. Thank you. Very helpful. I appreciate it.
I have some questions. I'm on page five, and I'm just going to address the general topic, because there's several billing items in this invoice related to this topic. It's legal research regarding the Michigan Liquor Control Code, and then you have legal research and preparation for drafting liquor license ordinance. What is that all about?
The city of Southland doesn't have a, an ordinance to address liquor licensing.
Really?
And I'm not sure how you've been getting through that, those applications, but that is something, working with Bob Donahue, and understanding that there are businesses that are going to come in, you only have one quota license left, and that would be the primary reason to have that ordinance put in place, so that you have procedures and standards to evaluate an application like that. And then you would also, it would largely, I've been working on a draft, and it would deal with transfer licenses in and out of the community as well.
This is a pretty significant piece of legal work to be doing. Do you have a background in dealing with Michigan liquor license stuff?
I have some.
That's a pretty specialized field.
I have some.
Okay. Okay. I am concerned that this issue was not brought before council. I mean, you've been working on this since April 4th, and if I had not asked the question tonight, almost April, May, June, almost three months later, I would not have known that we were deficient, although it doesn't surprise me, in our code regarding the Michigan liquor licenses. This is a pretty significant problem.
What's the problem? The fact that I'm working on it, or are they not?
No, no, not that you're working on it. It's a problem in that if you don't have the ordinance in place, you are setting yourself up, I would think, for potential litigation if you deny somebody a liquor license, and you don't have an ordinance to fall back on as to what your criteria was when you granted it. Okay.
To answer that question, I was dealing with the city manager. She was advised of what I was working on.
Lot of billing here for that liquor license. Here's one. Continued preparation to purchasing policies and procedures in local bidder/vendor preference. What is that all about?
I was reviewing the purchasing, given, in light of some of the conflict of interest things that came up. I took a look at the purchasing ordinance to, and I've been dealing with the city manager to deal with how that's being implemented.
Are you looking, are you looking at, for reference, are you looking at the city's ordinance regarding bidding?
Yes.
And why would, what is this policy? It says, and procedures in local bidder/vendor preference. What is that about? Preference?
Local bidder/vendor preference is something many communities give to local businesses. They, and they specifically define what is a local business, whether it is they have a corporate presence within the city limits, whether they have a retail or other presence within the city limits, and then when a bid process comes in, and you have three or four bidders, if the bidder that has local preference is not the lowest bidder, you have previously assigned a percentage that he can be over the lowest bidder, and still be considered the low bidder for bidding purposes, because you want to do business with local businesses and vendors.
So I have a question. Sorry to jump in, but I thought that we hired an outside firm to review.
No. No, this is, this is a, what you're, what you're looking at is possibly amending the Michigan, I mean, the Southland Code of Ordinance, is section 2-224, which deals with competitive bidding, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That is a problem, and I wish that had come to council. This has been worked on since April. Why is that a problem? Because the ordinance clearly says competitive bidding, and that competitive bid may or may not include a local vendor. A local vendor may not be the lowest bid at all.
Correct. But as I said, there are communities that adopt a low bidder policy that allows for the low bidder to be a non-low bidder if it is a local bidder. You say local bidders get a 10% preference.
Okay. I understand it. I understand the policy argument. I mean, I understand it all. How far are you on this policy? On doing this?
We've talked about issues, and we have, I really haven't provided, I haven't drafted any proposed changes at this point.
Well, maybe that should come to council first, to even see if we are interested in adopting such a policy, and then, once the policy decision has been made, then you can effectuate that. I personally, I'm just going to tell you how I feel. I'm not waiving my right to competitive bidding under any circumstances. I don't care whether they're local or not.
If I can add some additional information. If you recall, there was a recent ethical issue that came up, and during that process, it would, council comments included the desire to, or encourage, local businesses to bid, and there was encouragement for that. That's where that comes from.
Now you're raising two issues.
And the issue related to why this didn't come to council is, I typically deal with the city manager, deal operations. This would, if necessary, that's her decision, and we deal with these issues when things are brought to council.
Okay. We'll deal with that issue later. The problem I have with this is that just because somebody is local, and this is a policy argument for a later time, but I think this probably needs to go on the agenda, and the policy needs to be worked out, and then if the policy can be formulated, then you can effectuate the policy that's been expressed by city council. But for some council person to sit up here and say, well, you know, I'm not going to worry about Kivell's conflict of interest, because it deals with a local vendor, and I'm in favor of local vendors. That's what happened. I know who the council person was that made that comment.
What's that got to do with the question?
Okay. So what I'm saying is, so what I'm saying is competitive bidding is competitive bidding. I don't care whether you're local or not. I am not going to protect a local business if they can't bid competitively.
What's this got to do with...
Let me explain what it has.
You and their low bidder.
No, because Tim said it had to do with conflict of interest.
Conflict of interest, Tim, you brought it up.
And that's what prompted it, when there was a competitive bidding. It's all part of the political agenda, is what it is.
Tim Willholt, please.
Okay. I'm going to move on.
Hold on, Tim Willholt. There is, there is nothing, I haven't proposed a change in the ordinance. I have not encouraged or proposed a preference for local businesses. This came up out of that conflict of interest issue, and I looked at the issue because I was looking at the general competitive bidding and purchasing policies and practices of the city. That is something some communities do. Based on those comments, I wanted to know a little bit about it, whether that could be done here in the city. Why would you do it? How would you do it? And that is all that happened.
I don't believe that.
There's been no proposal.
I don't believe it.
There's been no agreement by the city manager and myself. We have not come up with a path on how to deal with that particular issue.
Okay.
This is my research to try and be aware of, and on top of that particular ordinance.
To protect people.
Okay, Maggie, go ahead.
Page eight. I had a question. You had a telephone conference with council member Parisian regarding the Open Meetings Act. What was that question about? Since I, I really am staying on top of the Open Meetings Act.
Does it matter?
Absolutely. He's not your attorney, so that's public information. What was that all about?
I don't recall.
It was about, she had a question about the Open Meetings Act and what was required. I believe it was a notice requirement.
That's weird, I just don't recall.
Notice, quite, okay.
Oh, it was no charge, wasn't it? There was no charge to that, was there?
There's no charge.
That's not the issue.
Oh, I know. I'm just making, I just wanted to check. I wanted to clarify.
Mr. Mayor, if I can also, it would be very helpful to this discussion if there were, you know, surprising me with these kinds of questions about billing that was done.
These are two months old, these invoices. These invoices are old.
Let him answer the question. But you could have just emailed me, or even picked up the phone, and say, hey, I got questions about this, 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 and this. Can you be ready to answer them?
We had to get them till Thursday, and these are from April.
But you don't communicate at all about this, and your intent is to surprise, and put me on my heels to make the city attorney look bad.
It's called transparency, Tim.
Thank you. I want to say something here, too, while we're at this, because this is, I've been, I...
Here we go.
We've already gone.
Yeah, no kidding.
So, you know, statements have been made time and time again for months. Please talk to the city manager if you have questions pertaining to anything that's on the agenda during the night. If you get them on Thursday, you've got a couple of days to contact them. Everybody does. And this is a constant dog and pony show, circus thing that's been going on. It's so obvious to the people that are sitting up here, and the people that are watching it on TV. You guys can say what you want to say. I'm, Tim has said exactly what needs to be said, and that is, you've got plenty of time to make a phone call, stop in, you've got a lot of time to do research, write down paperwork, do all kinds of information for everybody, but you don't ask the question until you're in front of a camera.
No.
It's obvious, guys.
John, do you know how hard it was to even get these invoices?
John, quit playing sides. Move on.
Until, until we...
Not playing sides, playing professionalism.
John, move on with your agenda. Move on. Point of order.
Until it was pushed to get these invoices...
We're going to the agenda.
Okay.
Professionalism.
Council comments, I'll have something to say.
Approval of the agenda.
I'll move the agenda.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comment. Carl. I already know you're coming.
This is kind of a special week here, this last week, because I had my birthday.
Happy birthday, Carl.
And many more.
I just wanted to touch on some info facts for you. Some of it's highlights, some of it's just mediocre. You might be well informed to know that the activity, work related, at the Southland Hotel Project has recently increased in the last week. There's been a decided absence of work up there over the previous three weeks, which I was not able to find out exactly what the reasons were, but the work has increased. Now that things are going on. Our Safe Routes to School project appears to be stalled. I haven't talked to anybody particularly about why, but I'm wondering what's happening because the school's out, and it's been pretty good weather, and I just wondered what's going on. That's a county project, though. I'm going to propose to our historical society that we have a barbecue of our own in the gazebo in McCatty Park, because the amount of reunions, anniversaries, graduation parties overall is quite down this year. There's not that much activity being programmed in the, in the park, because I'm through there four times a week usually, and there's just quite a bit down. Also, the weddings this year, we've only got five weddings scheduled. Most years, we have eight to 12 weddings going on in the chapel, in the village. This year, there's only five right now at this time. Yeah, and, I just want to mention, the cemetery project is underway and doing quite well. Up in the cemetery, if you recall, we approved a drain from a catch basin on the south end of Sayre Schools, and I heard the machinery working, so I biked over there, take a look at it, and I talked to the guys a little bit. And it's going to be very nice, I guess. By the way, we have five other drains going into Yerkes at this time also. So there's quite a few little drains that go in there. Anyway, they cut out some trees, and the place is going to look very nice when it's all said and done. Anyway, that's all I wanted to let you know about this tonight. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Carl.
Okay. Old business? Nothing. New business? Consider a resolution amending the City of Southland Personnel Manual regarding vacation, curral, actuarial, and banking.
It's a cruel. It's cruel.
No, I couldn't say it.
This is in relation to our discussion last meeting about paying out and accruing contingent liabilities for vacation time for our employees. Right now, department heads and the city manager are allowed unlimited maximum accumulation, and we do have some situations where there are employees that have a substantial amount of hours booked currently. I would want to make one change to the resolution that I brought to you. It's just a date. It's on, under four, little letter two, so it'll be at the top of the second page of the resolution. The second date should read December 31st, not July 1st of 2017. There was an oversight in my reading of the way things would work. I was trying to change dates and then realized, and it was brought to my attention today, that that second date needed to be December 31st as well.
Mine says that.
July 1st. Second date is December. It should be December, the annual leave, December 31st, not until the total accumulated annual leave falls below the two-year limit. Annual leave accumulated on or after, where it says July 1st, needs to read December 31st as well.
Oh, the second one, okay.
Yes.
That's the third date in that.
I apologize.
If you're looking for typos, if you go down to the last, or the second, be it further resolved, and if you skip a little bit to hereby repealed, only to the extent necessary to be given, this resolution? Is it to be give, or to be, well, I guess, necessary to be given? So is that correct?
It should be to be given.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you.
Or to give, yeah. To give sounds, the flow. Yeah, you have to strike the N on that given.
I have some questions, John. So, first question is, I'm curious as to...
Or to give, yeah. To give sounds, the flow, yeah, you have to strike the N on that given.
I have some questions, John. So, I, first question is, I'm curious as to who, who wrote this resolution?
I drafted the resolution and sent it to Tim for review.
Okay, that doesn't surprise me. My next question is, why are we not doing use it or lose it?
Because we don't have any employee groups that are on use it or lose it. We also would be doing a disservice to the city with the substantial amount of vacation time that the employees receive, that if you told them they all need to take their full maximum allotted time off, we would be without department heads in several departments for a quarter of the year.
So how much time does department heads have at the maximum? How many weeks are they allowed to accrue?
At 20 years, you begin to accrue 200 hours or 25 days.
Okay, five weeks, that's not uncommon. I know at, for example, Ford, you can accrue five weeks and they make it work, that's no issue. What I take issue with is that the way this resolution is before us, it's actually quite insulting to the taxpayers, quite frankly, because what it says is that we talked about having a use it or lose it. That's specifically what council members requested, but what's in front of us is able to accumulate two years, and then after two years, everything else is 50%, paid at 50%. So theoretically, department heads or whoever it is could accumulate years, or ye, years. And this is an unfunded liability. We just went through the largest tax increase in a decade. Now, we can make all the excuses you want, saying that we haven't had tax increases lately, but we went through the largest tax increase in a decade, and we have more if we don't do some work that is going to be coming next year. I'm not for them, but the way that this council's spending, it, it could happen next year. So my concern is, this is an unfunded liability, just like the pension cost, just like MERS, and it just speaks to the culture of, of city council in this city, is that we are unwilling to take on these serious issues. The way we're willing to take it on is to give a watered-down version and not use it or lose it?
Mr.-
This is, this is embarrassing. I mean, I'm not gonna pass this.
Number one.
This is a disservice.
Let our city manager talk, Joe.
Joe?
Yeah.
There was not a consensus decision. I did not have a majority opinion of the council telling me that a new policy needed to be a use it or lose it. If I get that directive from a majority of the council, that is the policy you will be putting in front of you. Secondly, the clause that you're talking about does not allow them to continue to accrue and get a 50% payout. That clause is designed for those that may have excess currently already accrued for which we already owe them.
It doesn't specify that, though. It says, "A city manager, department head who retires, resigns, or is laid off for an indefinite period who has accrued more than the maximum amount of annual leave permitted hereunder will be paid at a rate of 50% for any time over the limit." If we pass this tonight, they will be up to 50% after they hit their two years. Not to mention, section C-
No, because they won't be allowed to accrue anything more than the two years. You can't pay for something that is not allowed to be accrued.
No, the way it's written, it does not state that language where they can, no, it doesn't.
Yes, it does. When it says that they have a total accumulated leave not to exceed a two-year limit, two paragraphs before that, yes, it does say that.
Well, the ri, the way I read this is it leaves it open-ended, and not to mention it leaves it open-ended by saying the city manager has discretion in order to adjust the schedule as they see fit. So if you want to give more hours and adjust it, or it says city council as well, th, this is not responsible. What this is, is this is carrying more contingent liabilities, just like our $5 million that we owe in MERS, that we have no plan to pay for.
Keep it to the board.
No, that, that clause for additional is if I were to hire an employee such as Bob Donahue and had wanted to offer him three weeks vacation rather than two, as a new experienced employee, as a city manager, that would have given me the right to do so.
Okay, so five years from now, who, it doesn't matter, hopefully you're here, maybe you're not here, who knows, this will give the opportunity for a city manager to make any changes they want. That doesn't help the city in the long run. That does not help the residents of South Lion. This is not pro taxpayer. This is pro city employee, which we need sometimes, but when we have a budget crisis, we have to be serious about this stuff.
Okay, I'm gonna make another statement that I made earlier today. You got this in your packet really enough, and you have a big problem with our city manager who drafted this.
No, it's not the city manager, but don't, don't mischaracterize me though, John.
Wait a minute, let me finish it this time, let me finish. You already said, she said, she wrote it, he reviewed it. You've been tearing it apart since we got in here, so my question is, if you have questions, why not contact the city manager and give her an opportunity to do a discussion of why, in front of a, why grandstand?
Because this is a discussion to discuss it. It's not grandstand, I put this on, I know you say that all the time. I put this on Facebook, too.
Oh, that's, that's-
Good heavens.
You might be the only two people that don't believe Mrs. Grandstand.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I have not said a thing today.
Point of order.
Go ahead, Mike.
So I have some questions, and I'm not gonna get on my soapbox, but can we just go through the vacation policies right now for the city?
Sure.
Okay, I know the department heads have a max of 25 days right now, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that's after 20 years, and it's maxed down at 25 days?
Is the majority, is the maximum they can get in any given year, yes.
Okay. Um, the other city employees that are non-union, what are their, is that the same 25 days?
Same 25 days, based on how many years they've been with the city.
Okay. What do they have as far as carryover for vacation days not used in a given year?
For non-department heads, um-
I was 75.
I tried to mark each of those sections. I believe it's 30 days, but I want to make sure that I look at your, yes. Maximum accumulation for non-department head employees is 30 days.
Okay, so if I only use $10 or 10 vacation days a year, I can carry over 20 days?
And, and, uh, up, yes.
And I can accumulate a total of 30 days max?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and that's paid, so when I re, if I leave the city, I can cash in those 30 days?
Well, it depends on how you leave the city.
Retires.
Retire. I retire.
If you retire from the city, then-
It's paid.
Then you get paid.
Okay, all right.
Paid straight time.
Okay. And right now, without any change to the, um, the employee manual regarding department heads or the city manager, if I only, if I get 25 days a year and I used five days, I can carry over 20, and I can keep doing that, correct? And there's no limit on the number of days I could accumulate?
Correct.
Okay. And that's where we're at right now?
That's where we're at right now.
Okay.
But just for those two classes of employees, department heads and the city manager.
Okay. If a new department head were to start, are the vacation days negotiable as far as what that new department head would get?
The way the policy is written now, yes, I do, that same clause that Joe was saying allows me to change is in the current personnel handbook, and it does allow me to negotiate for annual leave amounts for certain positions.
Sure. Does that negotiation only involve the hiring of new employees for those positions? Or does that give you the discretion to change it on an annual basis?
It only, it only talks about it on the hiring process.
Okay, all right. All right. So right now, the proposal that's in front of us is that if I didn't take any vacation days, and I'm a department head with over 20 years of experience, or 20 years with the city, I'm sorry, I can carry over 25 days the first year, an additional 25 year, or 25 days the second year.
Yes.
So I have a total of 50 days that are banked.
Correct.
And the way the proposal's written right now, if I didn't use any vacation days the third year, I could then claim 12 and a half days on top of the 50?
No, you could not, you cannot accrue over the two years. So you can't accrue over the 50 days.
So the max I could accumulate is for a two-year period, and if I have over 20 years with the city, it would be 50 days?
Correct.
Okay. All right, now comes my questions. I'm in the private sector, and the max I can carry over every year is five days. Now granted, I get 32 days of vacation from my employer, but I've been there over 24 years, 25 years, I'm max. But regardless of how many days I take in a given year, the max I can carry over is five days.
Okay.
So if I only take two days of vacation, I have 30 days left at the end of the year, I lose 25 days.
Correct.
Is that something that we are looking at doing in the city, not necessarily with this resolution?
Is-
Giving a max number. I know right now the max number is 25, if you don't take any, for a 20-year employee. Um, but why are we given the option of, and I'm just, I, I need to know the answer to this question, I'm just, 'cause I'm looking at what I have at my employer, employment, it's five days max carryover. Why are we giving the potential or the possibility for that employee to carry over 50 days for a two-year period?
I did that based on our four collective bargaining agreements.
Okay.
Which the I U O E can accumulate a maximum of 40 days. AFSMI can accumulate a maximum of 40 days. The P O A M can accumulate, carry over 60 hours of unused vacation from one year to the next, but they also get 80 hours of personal leave time, which is convertible to comp time for all hours not used at the end of the calendar, or at the end of the year. And P O L C also gets 60 hours of unused vacation time and the option to roll over, let's see, the, wait. They have the option to be paid for up to 40 hours of possible 60 hours of vacation time. And again, out of the 80 personal leave time, convert any unused to comp time.
Okay. So we have two of our unions right now that have a max of 40 days carryover?
Yes.
Okay, is that regardless, I mean, they could accumulate that in five years, 10 years, what, it's max 40 days?
Max, yep. But they also have buyout clauses in each of their contracts. I U O, I U O E can choose to cash up 30 days of accumulated vacation if they have at least 30 days in their bank. And I believe AFSMI has the same option.
Okay. Um, future reference, if we're looking at changing the employment manual, it might be a good idea to include all that information so we have a basis of why your numbers might be one thing, and when you were comparing it to the numbers that are with the unions and with the non-department head, um, employees.
And the schedule of accrual, too.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, 'cause that kind of, I mean-
The schedule of accrual is standard across the board for all groups.
Okay.
And it's five days after six months with an additional five days at a year, so after a year, you-
Get 10 days.
A total of 10 days. After two years, 12 days, five years, 15, 10 years, 20, and 20 years, 25.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
John, okay. Well, Harvey.
Thank you. I just, I, I think I'm probably the only one up here that's spent their life in working for the government. And it's very common, especially as you become a more senior, um, worker, that you, that you bump up against the, the maximum accruals. And you're in a position where, um, every other pay period, you need to take a vacation day. It's take it or use it or lose it, um, in that, in that scenario. Everybody accepts that and that are in those positions. Uh, it's well-known because the accrual limits are well-known. And I think that's what we need to do, make our accrual limits well-known, but I think we also then have to accomplish a payoff of what the accruals are that we've already accumulated, uh, when there was no limit to accrual. Thank you.
Uh, that's, kind of speaks to what I wanted to talk about, because essentially, we had an arrangement with, with the department heads and the city managers up to date. The idea that, um, we're offering to buy out less than what their full complement of accrued days are at this stage of the game, and then punish them if they, they don't bleed down whatever their balance is before they retire, I think is inappropriate. We had an arrangement with them, I think that we should honor that, and whatever language goes in to modify what our circumstances are in the future should apply to new employees that are hired in under this same, this same arrangement, or under this contract, department heads or city managers, rather than applying it to the existing circumstances that we're, we're running with, so. I don't think anyone should be penalized as a product of having served us for over 25 years, and we should be, you know, just taking away some of what they've accrued as a simple function of what their job was and what the terms of that job had been.
Let's see. Um, I think if we're going to consider changing the employment manual, I, I think we really need to look at what effect any decision we make regarding department heads has on what we may be doing in the future with the, the union agreements when they come up, the collective bargaining agreements, and dealing with non-union employees or not department heads.
To make them direct parallels?
Well, yeah, I, I just want to make sure before we do something like this, I, I agree it has to be done, but we have to look at what effect it's gonna have down the road on whether or not our policy is, how's it gonna affect collective bargaining agreements in the future? I mean, I, I think right now we have 40 days for two unions' accumulation. You should really factor in what effect a decision we make on department heads and the trickle-down theory, how it's gonna affect the other, uh, employees in the city before we kind of rush to this right now.
To your point, though, Mike, um, it, I do tend to, I don't disagree with you, I would say that how we make this procedure, yes, I agree, will impact the unions. I would say, though, that anything, if we make it, let's just say, use it or lose it, that can only benefit the city as a whole and our residents by the simple fact that we're sending a message that we're gonna get serious about our contingent liabilities, and when we go to the negotiation table and the bargaining table, we're serious. And if we sit here tonight and we pass a fluff-fluff, uh, resolution here that doesn't address the problem, you know, say it's half, I can say it's meeting halfway in the middle, that's what it is, but it doesn't address the problem, then we're kind of sending a message of soft position when it comes time for negotiation that the city's not, that we're gonna not do the best interest for the residents.
I agree, I'm not, I'm not-
And I wasn't disagreeing with you.
I'm not, I'm not, I don't feel comfortable voting for this right now, just because I want to see what it kind of, I want to make sure that this council, you know, if we're gonna do something like this, make sure that we think about the trickle-down effect it's gonna have in our positions, and then what our position's gonna be as far as dealing with the other employees in the city other than the department heads.
Fair enough.
I don't think that it's fair necessarily to put this in a parallel with the, um-
Yes.
Yes. Oh, excuse me.
What? Hey.
Oh, okay, I didn't-
Sorry.
No, go on, okay.
That was my fault.
No, that's okay. Um, I, I think sometimes what happens is we lose perspective of who's paying the salaries in the city. And I think we sometimes lose perspective that we have a fairly large senior population in our city, and anything that affects us, taxes, affects them, probably more so than anybody else. And I have heard a lot of comments about this use or lose policy. And, um, actually, it was not coming from the seniors, it was coming from the millennials, uh, people that were 30, 32 years old, 33, that, um, said that their employer has a use it or lose it policy, and they understand it completely. And I think what happens sometimes in government is that we just think we can go to the well and ask the taxpayer for the money to fund these contingent liabilities. And this is a contingent liability. I'm the one that brought it up and said, you know, we've got to start dealing with contingent liabilities that have never been addressed in the city's budget. And the proposal in front of us tonight does waters down the contingent liability for the city, but it does not eliminate the contingent liability at all. And I just think that when other communities are adopting use it or lose it, and South Lion sits here and continues with some of these archaic policies that are draining the budget, you, you haven't prepared for it. you, you haven't prepared for it. It's time to just deal with the problem. It's a problem, it's a drain on the budget. And so I am going to support use it or lose it. I, I could be persuaded to go a little bit and allow employees to carry over five days only, but that would be the maximum they would be allowed to carry over. An employee may decide that they have relatives coming in from Europe and they want to spend a summer touring out west and they want an extended week, or they have a kid that's going to college and they want to travel down to Mississippi and spend time with their kid and get them acquainted. They may have a huge 70th, I don't know, reunion out in California and they may want to take some time. I understand that. So I don't have a problem with an employee carrying over no more than five days, but if they don't use it that year, they don't get paid for it. They don't get paid the 50%. And employee policies change all the time. That's an archaic vision, that's an archaic position when you say, well, the employee came on board and this was the deal. Well, get, get into the modern world because in the modern world, everything changes every single day. You talk to anybody in human resources and they will tell you their policies are changing every single day. The, the employee that comes into the labor force today knows that things will change for them as long as they are there and if they go to another employer, things will change as long as they are there. So to say that we owe certain employees because this is the deal we made, you got to get with the 21st century because things are changing all the time and I think employees understand that. As to the effect on the collective bargaining issue, yes, you have collective bargaining agreements that have a, have a different policy in place than what is being proposed tonight by some members of council and you deal with the collective bargaining issues as they come up. But clearly there will be a difference between union and non-union with respect to how vacation pay is going to be handled, but I think the important thing is, is that we owe it to the taxpayers to cap this liability, this contingent liability, which we're just finding out tonight what some of the dollar amounts actually are. I think it's time to put a stop to it and I think what we do is we come to an agreement tonight, consensus, it, it's either going to be use it or lose it or, or people are, I'm not ready to vote tonight because I don't think we've got what we want in front of us, but I think we, we owe it to Lynn to provide her with some consensus so that the proper amendment to the manual can be made. And you don't want to be attaching this stuff to, to the handbook. I mean, the reason for that is, is your collective bargaining agreements change every three years, so every three years you're reprinting your handbook, if you want to add a supplement that, that's on a separate sheet of paper, that's fine, but to integrate it into the document itself when, and compare with unions, that, those documents change about every three years anyway, so, so that's what I have on that.
I'd point out the reason we would tie it to the personnel handbook is we have a personnel handbook for non-union employees and then all of the personnel issues are spelled out in each of the union contracts, which act as their own personnel.
Yeah. Let's look here.
Come on.
This is, this is a long-term obligation, but this is, is being laid out to be something that's tantamount to MERS. This has nothing to do with the obligation that you have like a MERS obligation. This is something at 25 years, it's a one-time deal, or I mean at retirement, it's a one-time deal and you're, it's over with. So to try to equate this with something like MERS, that this mystery thing that no one seems to really have the full comprehensive view on, this isn't the same.
John, John. Well, I, I think that's the problem, is not really understanding where our liabilities lie. I mean, we've had this, this should have been changed 20 years ago and, and that's what it is, is it's, it's an unwillingness to tackle policies that should have been addressed decade, over a decade ago. So, you know, it's okay, you can have a difference of opinion, I got a difference of opinion, but the people I talk to, they say it's use it or lose it. I mean, I, I don't know the exact figure, but I'd say it's safe to say that 95% of the working population does not receive a pension, they don't receive an ability to carry over more than a week. I mean, it's just, this is what the taxpayers want, they want use it or lose it. They don't like looking at, as Maggie mentioned, they're, they're the ones that pay the bills and they don't like looking at a tax increase and then to add insult to injury, you slap him in the face and you say, well, by the way, there's people that are able to contribute, to accumulate years of vacation time. It's just, it's archaic. It's, again, it's just, I don't see why this wasn't addressed a decade ago.
Do you have a consensus for use it or lose it or a hybrid or are people with Lynn on her proposal?
I'm looking at a hybrid.
Yeah, we're looking at a hybrid, I'm in favor of a hybrid, Joe, how about you?
Five days, that's it.
Five days carryover?
That's it.
Okay, that's what I would do?
Use it or lose it.
Use it or lose it?
Five days.
With no pay?
No pay, none.
Okay, I would agree with that.
I mean, we're going to pay the current people that are owed, to be very clear.
We pay the current people that are owed.
There, if you've banked ours, we're not going to touch that, not we, but in my opinion, you don't touch that, they're owed that money.
Is there one more council person on board with this proposal?
I think we should have a reflection of some of our, of our neighbors, try to get a better understanding of what the area's systems are, so.
Okay, do we have another council member?
I would be on board with moving.
Okay, all right, we have a majority consensus, Lynn, could you draft that, please?
Okay, just to be clear, five days, no payout, when does it take effect? Because we're looking at, if we're cutting off and we're paying out all vacation time accrued as of what date?
January.
No, no, no.
It's new hires.
Anything, all the hours that have been accrued to whatever date that is are paid, are payable.
That, that, what date?
It's a debt that we owe.
But.
But then from that time on.
Right.
What, whatever policy we agree with, then that, that takes place.
What I'm saying is what date is this going to affect? The reason I ask is because we have one department head who has a significant amount of accrued vacation time. He is also due to renew and get another 200 hours in August. So if we are putting the cutoff in July, then those 200 hours are not eligible for this payout.
He's not a new hire.
Well, I, I would propose that we make the cutoff date January 1st, 2018. That way, that gives all affected employees six months to plan, decide what they're going to do and does that, does that include you, Bob? When would, when does your time accrue?
Mine just was in March, Maggie.
Okay, so his was in March, you're, you're okay, you're okay.
So if you have time this year, do you want to get banked? This is your last chance.
This is your last chance to do it.
It's fair, I mean, they're going to be paid and.
I have a comment. I just wanted to be clear that I am not in favor necessarily of a five-day bank, I just want to see a hybrid, I want to see other possible options. So I'm not exactly fitting myself into the mold right away, I want to see options. A hybrid I think would be ideal.
Okay. I understand.
Thank you.
Harvey?
Once again, my, one of the experiences that I had is when my employer, former employer, stopped one, or stopped or limited one benefit like that, for example, sick time. Old-time employees who have sick time accrued, that, those days were put in a separate bank and they were, they're payable upon retirement. They can't draw on them until then, they can't use them anymore, they no longer exist and then they started out on the same program as everyone else. I would propose a similar plan for accrued time, hours, days, whatever they are, by our senior employers or, or even maybe senior clerks and things who may, may be over the, whatever limit we set.
Okay.
So that's my recommendation.
Yeah, I agree with that, my employer did the same thing on sick time.
And ours did too.
Yeah.
When I became city, I'm sorry, department head, Rod, I was getting 20 sick time days because in the water department, wastewater, but they banked those and I've never touched them since and I've gone to seven days as the rest is management.
Right, they froze that, they froze that in time.
They're out there for you when you retire, right? That's exactly what I'm proposing.
Yep.
But the reason they froze them is because they were capping what the liability was for the entity. So the entity knew, the county knew exactly what their liability was, so they were, it's like a bank, you got to set that money aside and then you got to make sure that when that person retires, that money is there. That's why they, they froze it and said, you don't get it until you retire or you terminate. I mean, that's it. And I think we're doing the same thing here.
Yeah.
So how much sick time do people, employees get right now?
Seven days.
So we're saying that they could bank that sick time and then be paid out when they retire?
Talk about vacation time.
You just said the sick time. No, but that's what I'm asking is.
Not on sick days, Joe.
No, sick day policy has long since been changed and I am not prepared this evening to talk in depth.
Mr. Mayor, can I comment on that? There is a seven-day use it or lose it policy in place for sick time. I'll give you a personal example, over the last three years, I've turned in every minute of my sick time for the last three years because if I'm not sick, I'm not going to use it and I feel it's necessary for me to be here as much as possible. So it currently is use it or lose it.
Right.
Because you don't get paid if you don't use it. Correct.
Mary.
Correct.
Lynn, earlier you had said, like at the very beginning of this conversation, you had mentioned that it depends on how you leave the city, meaning whether they're laid off or whether they choose to retire.
The sick time payouts, there is a differentiation. For those that, if I am an employee and I have sick time accrued that year, if I retire or die, I get paid out for my sick time.
Yep.
If I have sick time and I just leave the city, I do not get my sick time.
Okay, so then if you are terminated?
If you're terminated, you do not get your sick time.
Okay.
Well, we're talking only a maximum of a week though, if you were.
Well, except for the, some employees that are still having the banks like Bob does.
Thank you for clarifying.
Tim, did you have something?
I just want to raise a, I understand this clean break and start everybody on the same page, I think that maybe, clearly we could do that with the non-union employees, I think we'll have to look at the collective bargaining agreements to figure out what the impact and I think that may end up, you know, you start the non-union employees and try and use that in your negotiations for the collective bargaining groups to achieve the same result type thing.
All right. Okay. So we're going to move on from this?
Yeah, I think we.
Postpone it to another day?
Yep.
How long do you need to come up with a, how long do you need to revise this?
Um, I would give me a month because if you want me to check with other communities just to make sure.
Well, we postpone to the first, second meeting in July.
Second.
Second meeting in July. Plenty of time to get it done.
Yep.
Need a second though.
Mary did it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So I'm assuming the second part of this, we've already exhausted as well, right?
No, we can still do the.
Still going to have a talk?
Yeah, we can still talk about the purchasing.
Purchase of the vacation time of Chief Collins and Superintendent Martin.
You asked for additional information on this, when we talked about the payout last time, we've already talked about the potential changes. Was not sure if you would want to do this since we didn't adopt the changes to the personnel policy, but you wanted amounts for that, for Chief Collins, it would be 707 hours, which at his current rate of pay would equal $31,808.54 and for Bob Martin, 524 hours equalling $22,034.96. I did discuss with the city's employment attorney, as I've been meeting with him on collective bargaining and discussed it and he said, based on the language that is in our handbook for how we handle payouts of accrued time when an employee separates from the city, that we would be best and legally advised to pay this vacation time at the current rate of pay because there is not really a reasonable way to identify from their use of time and banking of time when the hours were accrued, whether vacation they have taken this year was this year's vacation hours as opposed to time banked three years ago, which would have been at a different rate of pay, there's no way to do that.
So is this the full complement of their banked hours?
No, this is half.
All right.
So that was my question, is this half of the banked hours?
This is half of their current banked hours.
Okay, so, Mike, I have two questions here, I guess. When you made the original calculation for Bob, Bob was not, was on vacation, is this, is this your request?
This is his bank after his vacation time was taken out of it.
Half of his bank?
Right, we, we, yeah, we would be taking, and Bob and I have talked and he has said he would do the half of his banked hours.
Is that, and that's what I was asking, I wanted, I wanted to hear it from you, yeah.
That would be fine, sir.
Okay. So in, one of the things that we do by, accomplish by doing this is the, this half won't accrue any pay raises.
Correct.
So it would be who of us to get this done and, and save whatever pay raises are in the future. Thank you.
John, I have a question. So I just want to come back to a statement that you made Lynn about not knowing how many hours, based off of the rate versus when it was taken, not knowing how many hours were taken at the period of time, is that what you said?
Lori has a spreadsheet, what I'm trying to say and I'm not doing a very good job of it, she has a spreadsheet and in that spreadsheet, when an employee's seniority date comes, they accrue their vacation time for the next year.
Okay.
And that will show they have, say, 700 hours.
Right.
They use 40 hours this week and it goes down to 660. And they use 40 hours off and on over the next calendar year and they get to the end of the year before their next accrual and they have 620 hours left. Rolls over the next day, they add another 200 hours to it, so now they've got 820 hours. Now, when you go to calculate and pay out those hours, you don't know whether, you don't know when the hours being used were accumulated. Are you pulling from the first hours in, last hours out, or are you doing last hours in, are the first hours out? There's no way to do that type of accounting with the vacation time.
So you have a total, let's just call it.
You have a total, but you don't know when they've all accrued.
A thousand, so how are you, how, how did this go back years ago and keep the accounting to get to that, let's just say at 1,000 hours? How did you know it got there?
Does it just bump over the next year or the next time they get the addition?
Yes.
So if you have a balance of, say, 400 hours?
You have a balance of 400 hours, it's put into the spreadsheet that it's your seniority day, it looks at your seniority times a calculator that says how many hours you're supposed to get for that seniority and it adds that to your bank.
So do we know by year, how many hours were saved each year?
Like, say for instance, I know what you're saying, like in 2000, at the end of the year.
He saved 10 days or she, whoever.
I, I don't have access to Lori's spreadsheet, so I can't answer that.
Because, because what I'm getting at is, I'm not trying to be, push this too much or be difficult, is I would hope that the city has a way of accounting by knowing exactly how many years was saved each year, not just having a total of say, well, last year was 800, so now it's 850, so now, you know, two years later. So, now, you know, two years later, now we're at 900, oh, you know, just willy-nilly here. I mean...
It's a spreadsheet, there wouldn't be willy-nilly, but I don't have access...
To your point, you said that there's no way of us doing that, because we can't go back and find the exact dates. So, that tells me that we should really know exactly how mu... To me, it just seems very simple. If you know exactly what year, how much you saved, you can pull up the paycheck, you can see how much they paid.
Is, is the issue that when the city collects its data on accrued time, all the city is doing is logging in the accrual and not necessarily the date in which the accrual took place?
I believe so, yes.
So, all you're doing is working with an aggregate number that accrues every year, but you're not able to go back into the data and disseminate whether eight hours were accrued in 2005, or 2006, or 2007. Is that kind of what's going on?
Yes.
And I understand that, but how do we, but how do we know, let's say, 20 years ago? Are we using the same accrual system? Are we using spreadsheets?
Yeah, we're using, to my knowledge, we're using an Excel spreadsheet.
See, it sounds, to me, just the impression is, it sounds very archaic. I mean, it should be, okay, the answer I would like to hear is, yes, we can go back to 1999 and say exactly how many hours were, were banked. Hopefully, that's the case. I don't know.
I think what she's saying is, they can't. They can only, the, the system that the city is using now, as I understand it, only gives the aggregate number. So, when the chief decides to roll another, let's say, 20 hours into his bank in August, all the system is going to show is that he has another 20 hours. It's not, he, we're not gonna be able to track back into the data and figure out that, unless we go to the minutes, or somebody puts it on the record or something.
That's scary, then.
It is, it is.
That's very scary.
It is, it is.
I mean, how do we know the numbers are accurate if we can't go year by year? It's, not saying that they're, they're not, I'm just saying, but how do we know?
Every year, Joe.
Well...
Well, actually, if you look at the, the agenda note that we have here, concerning the question related to whether the hours would be paid to the employee's current rate or previous rate of pay, I discussed the issue with the employee, employment attorney, who advised that the base upon the language in the employee handbook regarding the payout of accrued time when the employee separates for any reason from the city, that the time is to be paid at the employee's current rate.
Yeah, that's not the issue.
That seems pretty unambiguous.
No, that's not the issue. The issue is that we have no way of accounting how many hours were saved. I'm not talking about the payout, fine. I mean, it's probably gonna be, I wanna say washed, but it's not gonna...
It's the issue before us.
No, no, this is important, though. If we don't know how many hours were saved each year, how do we, I don't, how do we know our whole system isn't, is accurate? We can't even go back and say...
Well, it doesn't change anything. The handbook says that you're paid at the current rate of pay. Whatever your accrued hours are paid...
There's two separate issues. There's two separate issues. Okay, I get that. You're gonna pay at whatever the handbook says, but how do we know? The record-keeping is what I'm talking about. How do we know how much was accumulated each year? And if we can't give an honest answer to that...
What's the difference? If it's all accrued and you're getting paid ultimately at the current pay, why does any of that change?
Because I want to make sure we have accurate records.
He wants to make sure that we're not overpaying for unaccrued hours. I believe Lori...
Or underpaying, for that matter. How do we know that? If we can't even say how much was accrued each year, that's a problem.
Mr. Mayor, can I comment?
Yes, sir.
Maybe clarify. I believe, too, that the city bookkeeper does keep an Excel spreadsheet.
Right.
When I was personally doing payroll for the police department, even to this day, I keep an XX, Excel spreadsheet that indicates a running balance of all the time banks for all of the employees in the police department. Lieutenant Solvick also keeps the same spreadsheet. Every six months, this is respect to police department only, that's all I can speak for, every six months, Lieutenant Solvick and I reconcile our accounting of time banks, and then we submit a list to Lori of what we believe to be the accurate numbers. She compares that to her, her numbers, and if we agree then, and only then, do we assume that the numbers are correct. Lori's numbers are the ones that are considered to be the official numbers. If for any reason there's a discrepancy, then Lieutenant Solvick, can I go back? We sit there with both computers in front of us, we go line by line, day by day, every hour of comp time, every hour of sick time, every hour of vacation time was taken off. We look for the error, just like you were balancing your checkbook, I guess is the best example. We find the error, if there was one on our part. If, if we don't find an error, then we go say, Lori, our numbers seem correct, maybe you didn't see this. But we only consider the numbers accurate and right once all three of us agree.
No, and that's reassuring, and that's what I wanted to hear, thank you.
You did the same thing in our department.
And I, I was just looking for a response of, yes, we can go back, and Bob or Chief, Chief Collins, yes, we can go back and we can say exactly how many years were banked in 1999. That's all I was looking for, but right now, I, I'm not getting that reassurance. That's where my concern is, that's it. It's not about the payout or how much, or the rate of payout. I want to look for that reassurance, because right now, I'm not getting it.
Because I can't provide that to you. Lori is the only person that has access to that spreadsheet.
Do the clerks have a representative, representative that would do the same kind of reconciling that the other two departments do?
No.
So, that would actually be the only weak link.
But I do know that on a quarterly basis, Lori and her accounting assistant go through every time-off slip that has been turned in and verify it against the record, and if there's any discrepancies, contact the employees about, were you off this day, were you not off that day, because I've got you off on the spreadsheet, or we don't have you off on the spreadsheet and you've got a time-off slip turned in.
So, the accountants are doing the reconciling? Yeah, okay, so it should be pretty valid, then.
Mr. Mayor, one more comment, if I could. And this is short, much shorter term, two things. I'm not sure how far Lori's spreadsheets go back as far as retention, and I'm not exactly sure how far back hours could go, but they go back pretty far. But since we changed payroll companies, I believe it's ADP now, every employee's check stub, when, when we get paid every two weeks, the check stub indicates on there your, the, the current balance on your, of all of your existing time banks. So, if an employee noticed a discrepancy, they could call to someone's attention right away.
And that's citywide?
Yes.
Yes. All of ADP?
That's what ADP does.
Great, perfect, that simplifies things.
The, the issues that I have with what's being presented in this particular buyback purchase of bank vacation time is, first of all, when you look to the explanation of topic, what year are we talking about? The year is 216 to 218, or is it 217 to 218? What's the correct year?
2016, 2017.
Okay, so it's coming out of the current, the current budget. I do want to note, because I am going to advocate for two seconds for the facade program, is that the dollar amounts being proposed here tonight could have been used for the facade program. We somehow found money to pay for vacation, but we didn't have money for our investment in our downtown. The additional problem that I have with this is that the whole reason for me to bring up this issue regarding the contingent liability is that you still haven't provided what the contingent liability is. I just learned tonight that it was half. It, it, is it, is it really more than 707 hours?
When Lloyd accrues his vac...
What's his total, what is his total hours owed? What is the total obligation the city owes the chief at effective tonight? Total?
1,198 hours.
That's a very different number than what's on here. If you're going to address contingent liabilities, you need to understand what your liability is. And I don't know how anybody on this council can vote for anything that they don't understand. This, that, these numbers are not the true contingent liabilities. If you want to pay half of the contingent liability, then say it. But the contingent liability is 1,000 blah-blah hours, it's 61,000 blah-blah blah, and you do that. That's the contingent liability that this city has to plan for. Why is that important? Because some of the contingent liability is coming out of the budget in 2016-17, which was just corrected in this, and the balance of it has got to be determined to be paid out of what budget? Is it gonna come out of the 218-219 budget? Is it gonna come out of the 219-220 budget? So, until you understand what that dollar, dollar amount is, I don't see how you can plan for anything. So, I'm voting no on this tonight. Thank you.
John, that was the rationale for my questions about where we were coming from as far as setting these, these barriers for existing employees, why this thing should transition, the language should end up being created for new hires, simply because we still have, half of their obligation is in limbo. So, the idea that they're going to have to turn around and either use it, or, I mean, certainly, they're not going to end up using 700 hours of vacation time. So, that means that we're obligated to end up paying that out before the, the trigger to give them the, whatever, what was it, five days to bank, or whatever we had talked about earlier?
No, we could create a program that locks those into a bank that they can't use, but will be paid out when they retire.
All right, well, that's a perfect solution, then, all right. That's, that's why I was, why I'd bring, or brought it up in that conversation earlier, knowing that this was still hanging there, so...
I have a comment, John. So, I'm also a no vote on this, simply, let me back up and say, as I mentioned before and several times, Chief, absolutely, you are owed the money. Bob, you are owed the money. There's no question there. My issue is that we just passed the largest tax increase in a decade onto our residents, so it is time that we start changing the culture on the city council, in the city hall, and be more fiscally responsible. And what I mean by that is, let me give you an example. I suggested that we should have a hiring freeze with our employees, because if we hire somebody new, they're gonna go on the pension system. And we need to move out of a pension system, because down the road, it's gonna kill us. We, we can't afford it, it's a dinosaur. So, that's kind of the culture I'm talking about, and I claim, and I stated that I'm not gonna vote for any payout until we update the policy. And what we had before us 20 minutes ago, 30 minutes ago, did not address our systematic problems. It did not change the policy, but what was asked to be proposed, it was a watered-down version that was not favorable to the taxpayers. So, that's what I'm talking about, is we need to do what's right for the taxpayers, and I'm not gonna vote until we change the policy to release these funds. Thank you.
Bob, what's your total banked hours? Do you know off the top of your head?
It's 131 days, so...
131 days?
I don't have a calculator.
Okay.
Eight hours a day.
Yep. So, it's 1,048?
Yeah, it's close to 1,000.
With that said, though, we had a discussion a little earlier tonight about that banked sick time. I have 26 days to bank.
Yeah, I'm not, yeah.
Or not, that's okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's all. I just wanted to make, want to be right up front with you guys, so, okay.
I appreciate it.
And you don't get all of your sick time anyway, so I just...
Right.
So, whatever 131 times eight is.
Yep.
Was it 65 I have, or...
So, right now, our total liability for the vacation time would be for Bob, 1,048 hours, and for Lloyd, 1,198 hours. And then you're up for a renewal in August?
Correct.
And you just got yours in March, right? Okay.
I think one of the things I would also look at as this policy moves forward is, I would have a release drafted for these employees, that when they do get paid, they agree to the accounting by the city, so if it's 1,000-whatever hours, they sign a document. In fact, I'd probably have that ready when the policy goes into effect, that all employees affected by this, they agree to whatever these hours are, so we have some statement in writing as to what they believe the counting is as to their accrued hours, and then have them sign off every time that there's a payment, and put it in the personnel file.
I know we're spot on, because we, we deal extremely closely...
Bob, this isn't about you, this is about the city.
No, but I mean, Judy, our girl...
That's not the issue, Bob.
I know, okay.
The, the issue we brought it, the reason we brought it before the end of this budget year is, we were trying to pay it under this budget, but I, I think if we adopt a new policy at some point in the next month, I, I don't have a problem putting it off. It's my two cents worth.
Putting off the payment?
The payment.
Into another budget year?
Well, no, it depends. If we bank it and freeze it, then the question is, is it, it'd be payable at retirement, right?
Right.
As opposed to paying it now?
Be paid at a higher rate.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that is a higher rate.
I don't have a problem paying them now, half of what they have. I don't have a problem cashing them out. Personally, I would cash them out.
I think we should at least cash out this, this amount, because, because it starts to clear the books.
Yep, yep, I agree.
Then the new language is easy to employ.
But to the... That's exactly what is being talked about over here. We don't whittle away, we just talk about it, but not whittle away at it, we're not gonna get a resolution of it.
So, that would reduce our liability?
Half.
Yeah, half.
Roughly half.
Yeah.
Just take their numbers, it's half.
Yeah.
And then that's basically it. And the reason you probably want to cash them out now, as I think the point was made, is that, understanding the policy tonight, considering that they get paid out when they retire or whatever, they're always gonna be paid out at their higher rate of pay. So, if they continue to work for another 10 years, then you'll be paying them out at, at whatever they're making 10 years from now. That's ludicrous. Cash them out now, get the liability off the books, and move on.
I'll make the motion that we approve the payments, payments of vacation time buyback as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. I've got a question. So, what is the, why wouldn't we be looking at trying to get this comprehensively done now? Why do the half?
Because we don't even know what we're voting on, like, how many hours, or what the amount is.
Yeah, we do, right here.
I mean, if it was all of it...
Numbers are right there.
No, but the full amount, of how much is it? Do we have the numbers of the full amount?
We don't have the numbers.
You don't have them.
That's what I said, we don't know what we're voting on if we do all of it.
Now, we did that with the last issue that we postponed. We dealt with that with the last issue that we postponed.
I didn't get the vote, so can, I ask for a roll call.
Can I vote?
I'm afraid I still haven't gotten an answer to my question. Why wouldn't we be looking at the entire package as opposed to the half of the package?
Because we don't know the dollar amounts.
So, is the, the objective is, we'll find out what the dollar amounts, and at our next meeting, finish it up? We're trying to pay it under this, this budget.
We, we, may I?
Yes.
We did some budget adjustments and budget amendments at our last meeting that are designed to pay for this proposal out of this year's budget.
All right.
Further discussion from my end, just simply, I, I want to vote yes on this, but simply because we do not have the, the policy in place now to address the systematic problem, I'm a no. Hopefully, we'll get that addressed, but tonight, I'm a no.
I'm going to vote yes, but I want to know when we're going to address the balance.
Second meeting in July, when the policy...
That's when the new policy's coming in.
Yeah, further discussion on it.
Yeah, and we could, we could address the remaining balance at that time.
You gotta have the money to pay it.
Well, I know it, I mean, that's, that was my next question, is, so is that going to be taken from fund balance?
Well, it would be in the existing budget.
I don't want to get an argument here.
Because it was planned. I mean, well, maybe I'm misspeaking the mistake.
Well, I don't, I don't recall that being talked about in the budget for next year, that's why I'm asking. So, are we going to pull it from fund balance?
Well, not this year, no.
Next year?
I don't know, we're not talking about paying it out next year.
Yeah, we're just doing...
We haven't made that policy decision yet. We haven't had a request even for that yet.
You're asking if we're going to.
I am asking if we're going to.
If we, if we're asked, we're gonna have to find the funding, yes. Because the obligation's already there, we can't wish that away.
No, I understand that, but, I mean, the objective here is to try to clear the board so that we are starting clean, so... Right, but this is at least... And the new policy can be implemented, and we have better reins on it.
And the new policy can be implemented, and we have better reins on it.
That would be nice, I don't know that we can afford that.
Is there a roll call?
Yeah, I thought we voted, but I'll request a roll call, just so I know where we're at.
Tivell?
Yeah.
Resi?
Yes.
Resi?
No.
Dallas?
Yes.
Fidel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Kurtzvall?
No.
Consider approval for the Pumpkin Fest Parade and necessary road closures.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, Philip Piper, 135 North Warren, South Line, Michigan.
Kathy Swine, President, Pumpkin Fest, 44 Woodland Place.
We're here tonight to ask for permission for the road closures for the Pumpkin Fest Parade. We've submitted the materials, and we've got a recommendation from the chief.
I'll make the motion that we approve the requested closures for the Pumpkin Fest Parade as presented.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering, Kathy.
Thanks for coming out.
Consider the replacement of the Baker Park Fountain.
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions, after, oh wait, go ahead, speak to it, I just have, I'm excited.
No, actually, Bob's going to speak.
I have a question, I have actually multiple questions for you, whenever you're ready.
Can I go?
Yeah, yep.
Yes. I sat through the budget meetings, I know how hard we wanted certain things. One of them was, after many conversations about the entrance point coming from east heading west into the city, what a visual place and spot Baker Park is on that fountain. With that said, we're at the end of the budget year, but we went through, Judy, the gal I work with, and we went through a fine tune and comb, and I did find it some money. Now, let me just say this, initially, what we were going to do, if you remember, I was going to pay half of this budget, and then pick up the other half next year. And then I think that got stricken, if I'm not mistaken, from the budget, okay? We went through the budget, and under line item, DPW 930 repair and maintenance, we have money there. Speaks pretty clearly to what we would like to do here, or I'm offering this to you guys, you know? And so, that current but, fountain that's in that, pump and fountain that's in the structure now, is over 20 years old. Parts are, if we can find them, it would, it could be down for weeks at a time to try to find them. And it would be from this gentleman, because that's who initially put that fountain in for us back 20 years ago, so how long ago was that? That'd be a long time ago, 1996, thereabouts, okay? So with that said, we talked to him again, and I gave you a picture of what this fountain would look like. It's much smaller and much more compact, it's all stainless steel, it's lighted up, lit up, if you will, and for that amount, it comes with all of the equipment that is spoken to in this picture here that I sent you. And if you give me the go-ahead, we can have a new fountain in there come maybe August, and we can do this. So I wanted to at least let the council know that we're working hard to try to watch our money and try to find something, and I can even tell you the dollar amount that's in that fountain.
Where'd you find the money from?
It's 930 under land improvements, and let me tell you, I'll let you read what that is, Joe. Land improvements includes all improvements of city property and easements, such as the sidewalk program, renew and replacement sidewalks, parking lot striping, and tree work, such as removal, trimming, planting, and maintenance, decorative signs around the city, at the city entrances, and also included in this account. To maintain our tree city status, we budget $2 per capita, number of people times $2, which works out to be approximately $21,000. We have already this year planted 32 trees. That budget goes to cleaning up fallen trees, and trimming trees on streams such as Whipple Street, and East Liberty, and West Liberty, trees that are large and endanger the residents. So there is enough money there to address this $9,000 fountain, and I can even tell you how much is in there at this exact moment.
Bob, would that be under 974?
No, it's under.
930.
I'm sorry, yes it is, 974, yes, yeah, exactly.
This is, this is leftover money from last year's budget, or going?
So as of this balance, as of 620, we have $27,000 in that account.
But it's under which budget the?
1617.
1617.
Current budget.
Yeah. We have $27,878 in there right now.
Yeah, and the reason why I asked where the money came from, was because we just went through this budget exercise now, where, where we had to raise the millage rate, .7 mils, and I suggested we went line by line to try and find money, and it kind of just illustrates my point, that at the end of the year, you can find money to shuffle around.
But that money isn't, you know, it's not being spent, that will be in the account.
Oh, I know, I know, I'm just saying, at the end of the year, there's, there's money left, and that was my point all along.
So I was trying to do this, and do this for the city and the council, and so that's why I wanted to bring it forward. There is one little incident, though, where, when I had the impression early on that we were going to do this, I signed off on a PO back in the day, when we said we would pay this gentleman half of that money. Remember, we talked about it quite a while years back, and he contacted us about two weeks ago, saying, hey, where is that $4,500? And I said, well, we're still in discussion, and that's the honest truth. So I'm telling you every ounce of information related to this fountain.
Thank you for being so straightforward, that's appreciated, honesty.
It wasn't budgeted, and yet, we gave a PO, we signed a PO?
Yeah. I did, Joe. For half of it, though, because we talked about doing that.
Yeah.
It was verbally discussed and approved to do that at one of the budget meetings.
Yeah.
Because that's a legal document, a purchase order. I don't think he's going to come over after us over $4,500, but.
Well, he's a small guy, I mean, a small town, small business, but at the time, I thought it was a go-ahead, and then each meeting transpired differently, so.
Bob, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
When you originally approached the project, you, did you check three bids on that? Did you get more than, or did we waive the bidding?
Harvey, there's very few fountain companies in the state of Michigan, okay? This gentleman's out of Washington, Michigan, which isn't that far away, he's the one that did the initial work. We tried to design and build our own with like a trash pump and stuff like that, and we found that we were way overhead, well over the $9,000 that it would be here.
So, so we just need to waive the bidding process, then? Is that, John, is that correct?
Well, what it is, is, I think waiving the bidding process is not appropriate. The ordinance is, city ordinance, section 2-224, and that ordinance does require expenditures over $5,000 to go out to competitive bid. However, you do have an opportunity to, to clean up this mess a little bit, because that's what you have, you already have a PO on it, is that the ordinance says, is that, that it shall be subject to competitive bidding prescribed, except, except where council shall determine that no advantage to the city would result, or where the expenditure or contract is for professional services. Waiving a competitive bid process when you have an ordinance in place is absolutely inappropriate and cannot be tolerated at any time. What you have to do is put the facts on the record that satisfy the conditions of the ordinance. So somebody needs to say that there is no advantage to the city that would result in going out for a competitive bid, or somebody needs to put on the record that the expenditure or the contract is for professional services. Thank you.
So then, my question to you, Bob, is there any advantage to going out to bid for this?
No, sir. Thank you.
Well, do we know that? You said there's not very many, have we checked if there's other companies?
We have, Joe, we have.
Is there any in Ohio, even, Toledo area?
We went down into Indiana and Ohio, and we contacted people and got no response back. We worked hard on this through the months of February and March, that far back.
Actually, that was going to be my question to you as well, was, how many bids did we get, and the whole process that went into that, so now that that's out of the way, I see on the sheet here, at the very bottom where it says quote notes, you give a series of things that are being quoted, and then at the very tail end, it's cut off. Is that to say with a five-year, can I conclude the sentence with warranty, or is that?
I'm sorry, so where, what's?
So on the Aqua Masters quote form, at the very bottom, where it says quote notes.
Handout today.
That you gave us?
Oh, the one I handed today.
Yeah.
It's cut off, but I'm assuming that's a five-year warranty, is that correct?
Yes, there is.
Okay, all right, so that's what I wanted to know as well.
I'm sorry about that.
No, that's okay, I just, that's for clarity, but also, I just want to confirm that we're not doing anything with the drain. The drain is still going to stay this, there is no drain, right?
I spoke to that, on the bottom of the agenda, my agenda note here. There currently is no drain and fill system for this, that's all about this. The way we drain it is stick a trash pump in there, gasoline trash pump, and pump it out to Reynolds Street Parkway down our storm sewer, and it drains away. And the way it's filled, Maggie can speak to this, because she's seen us do it, we shoot the water about 25 feet through the air, psh, and it fills up. I don't know why it was ever designed this way, but it was a long time ago. So for $2,500, it's in there, I could, my guys can make some huge corrections here, but it's not necessary. If you guys want to sit on this and wait down the road.
Well, here's my concern, if we're going to do this, I kind of want to do it right, and I don't see anything in here about the drain for the quote that we have, how much additional do we know, would it be to?
Well, that $2,500 that I spoke of.
But that's for you guys to do it, right?
Yeah, for us to do it, and we would do it. We never meant to send this out to bid or anything, to have somebody else do it.
Okay, okay.
We always meant from the get-go, for us to do it in-house. So we could do that.
Okay.
For about $2,500.
Because I'm of the opinion, I know we're tight on money, but at the same time, though, if it's going to fix any prior issues that we have now, to put a drain in that's functioning, that's going to work and last a long period of time, then I'm in favor of spending the $2,500, because that park is beautiful, and it has so much.
I agree.
It's very scenic, when you're going by, so I think we should do it right.
My view on that is, we would start with the drain, and if any money's left over after that, we would address the fill situation, too, okay?
Okay.
We wouldn't tackle both of them, then come up short, we'd tackle one over the other.
I guess that's what I'm looking for, then, because I'm assuming that we're doing this all at once, if you're going to fix it, fix it all together, and don't sparse it out.
Yeah.
So, but if you, if that is, I trust your plan of action, so if that's how you do it, then more power to you, I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
So just to make sure, thank you.
Did I answer?
You did, you answered it, thank you.
John, I have another question. So I, I just want to come back to this, I'm not trying to be, to beat you up on this. Ever since we had this major tax increase, largest in a decade, I've been trying to scrutinize things a lot, and I think about all the cities in Michigan, and all over the country, that have fountains.
And this guy does?
It's, so, I mean, you have Plymouth, this comes to my mind, you have, they're all over the place, there's fountains, so are you telling me that he's the only guy who does repairs fountains in all of Michigan?
The one that we found, but.
Because I'm curious, just exactly how many?
Let me just speak to this fountain. If you, have you ever gone and looked at the fountain that's in there now, Joe?
Yep, many times.
Okay, it's a big fiberglass thing that sits in the floor bit. This thing was designed to sit at the same exact depth as that existing fountain, and function with water intake at the same exact level. If you've ever noticed, we have that steel grating that's around that whole thing. If I had the money right now, I'd like to get rid of that and put plastic in there, because I see little kids in there, climb in there sometimes, and they're going to cut their feet. In fact, it's probably happened, because they're so sharp and stuff like that. But that was fabricated by some guy back in the day, that we can't get our, we can't find somebody to do that kind of work for us. So with that said, we've done our due diligence, and we feel that this is our, the most economical way to go for this city.
So how many quotes do we get, then? Or how many people do we contact?
So I dealt closely with my DPW leader, Ron Brock, me and him, we probably talked, we probably sent out two or three, but do I have that number ready that my tongue, I don't?
Okay, because if you, I just, I'm in purchasing, and my experience is, even specific things, very specific things, if you're going to get two quotes, you're going to, you need to send out 10, now maybe there's not 10 companies, I get that, but what, what my concern is, is that, we've already gone through this waiving of the competitive bid, and it really did bring us some trouble for the city, so I just feel a little uneasy about waiving competitive bids going forward. It's nothing against the fountain, or anything, it's, it's the.
You can see in there.
It's the, the process of the competitive bids, and I don't want to get in the habit of waiving competitive bids without seeing exactly, okay, how many, how many companies did we contact? So for example, when I send out quotes, and I, and people aren't interested, I got to show, no quote, give a reason why, why they didn't quote, you know, when it was con, so, but I don't see any of that, and I trust you, I just, I don't, I don't know exactly how many companies were contacted, I don't see a practical reason why we would waive the competitive bid, is what I'm getting at, it's the process I'm talking about, not not wanting a, that's a double negative, but not wanting a fountain, that's not what it's about.
I understand that. I think I painted this a little bit into a corner here, when I signed that PO, though, I'm being 100% honest with the council.
How long do you think that the place will be torn up putting that drain in?
A day, yeah.
It's just a drain.
Because we're going to do the work right up to the edge, and then make, and we haven't sat down and told.
Are you going into the well, or are you just going into the body of the fountain?
Well, we're just going to go right under the lip of it, right under the side of it, and come up with a.
Okay, so it won't actually, you'll still end up having to put a pump into the well?
We're going to gravity drain this, it's going to be drained.
I know, but I mean, the well's still another foot deeper than what the bottom of the fountain is.
I know, we, there will not be a pump, I guarantee you, all right? Listen, don't even, give me that money then, right now, let me look at it, and I'll come back the next time with the exact plan, then, how to do that, how we will, and I'll map it out exactly.
I have a lot of confidence in you guys, I'm just, I'm just not tracking how you're going to bore and get through there without, where it's one day's worth of time.
Well, we're not going to, I mean, it's going to be right up to the edge, but it, that fountain's going to be down for probably two days with the insulation, I mean, getting the old one out and this in, and stuff like that.
Well, that's, I was worried about the pavings being tore up and trenching and that stuff, so.
No, no, no.
Well, Lynn, I have a question for you. So, I mean, I see people who get married at the Witches Hat, the church there, and then they come over and they do their pictures in front of the fountain, so if we're doing this in August, that's still peak wedding season, is that going to affect us? How many weddings do we have booked?
I would have to talk to Kelly about how many weddings we have booked, but it's something that we could work around with her.
Okay.
That's not a bad idea, you know, the guys could wait and do those work come to the end of the season, let's say in October.
I'm just trying to foresee, if you have a bride who is intending to get married and have pictures taken there.
Even graduation pictures and everything.
Graduations?
And let me tell you, I never thought about that, that makes complete sense. But that fountain is going to be no more than a date, and you'll be having beautiful lights.
Okay.
There won't be at Christmas time, I do, though, we can't do red and green, because it'll be frozen out there, but we can have red, white, and blue on the porch.
We had some really good weather into November, so, I mean, we could even push it a little further after wedding season, if it's going to even affect.
Yeah.
South Lions revenue from that, I don't know if it will.
It would be nice to have it for Pumpkin Fest, though.
It would be on for Pumpkin Fest.
So the total cost of this is roughly $11,288, then includes the, the actual apparatus itself, and the $2,500 that you estimate for the, for drilling the drain, correct?
Yes.
And this is going to be done during the weekday? And this is gonna be done during the weekday?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, I don't know too many weddings during the weekday, so as long as you're not working on the weekends, it'll be fine. Anybody wants to use it on a weekend, they should be okay. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the purchase of the new Aqua Master fixed base fountain from Tri-County Aquatic Aquatics, because the head of the DPW has put on the record sufficient facts that leads me to conclude that there is no advantage to the city that would result in putting this out for a competitive bid.
I'll second. Further discussion? If I may, I, I, my only, I'm very torn, but I will say that the being in purchasing and knowing that a PO has been provided, I feel that we have a moral obligation to honor the PO, however it got there.
I don't think that is before either.
That's fine, and it's, you know, it's a one-off thing. I'm not too worried about it. But legally, we need to honor the terms of the purchase order that the city put before. So I, I'm, I would have liked to see in competitive bids, but with that being said with the PO, I'm, I'm, I'm for this, so I'm a yes. Thank you.
Motion support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yep.
Kaylin, budget.
Budgets. Um, there was some direction, I wasn't sure whether it was a hundred percent unanimous consensus from the council on making the budget a standing agenda item, just as the downtown discussion, or whether it would make more sense to make it a monthly, when the reports come out, or quarterly, when the quarterly reports come out, uh, agenda item. So I have it on the agenda tonight. I'm asking for more direction from the council.
How much are we projected short for eighteen nineteen?
I don't have that in front of me.
Thank you. Oh, sorry, excuse me.
No, that's okay.
Hundred and sixty-two thousand, one sixty-nine. Yeah, but it's just based on, based on this.
It's based on the numbers that are in there. If there's a number that's a shortfall, I don't have my budget with me.
But just to point out, since the question was raised, the purpose of a two-year running budget is that the second year also be balanced.
And this one is not?
And this one certainly is not.
That was the purpose of my question, was to understand how much we are shy after this budget is before us today, to see if we do need to talk about it. In my opinion is that being a hundred and ninety, I thought it was three hundred and fifty thousand, but I still don't know what was voted on. But I, now it's one ninety-two. Point remains that it's still a struggle. At this current rate of spending, it, we're either gonna have to cut services or tax increase. Those are the options. So I would say having it on here as a standing item is absolutely necessary. Not, not even a question of if. It's, it's, it is.
I would just toss out that, um, that the budget be a standing item on the agenda, and we can either use that time to discuss budget issues, or go through something a little bit more formal, something a little bit more planned, and maybe brainstorm tonight with some topics that we want covered in the next six months, things that we want dealt with. And as with any plan, some of the items will get resolved, some of them won't. Some months we may not have anything on the budget, but I think, given the serious, seriousness of, of the budget condition, it's probably something that we should have every week, I mean, every meeting, but that's just my opinion. I do have some questions I do wanna ask about the budget. I don't know if now would be the time, or if we just wanna talk in generalities.
Well, as I didn't bring my copy of the budget with me, I would prefer, tonight at least, to speak in generalities.
Well, let me, um, point out some areas then, and you could provide me with some answers, or bring them back at the next meeting. I am looking at the general fund revenues, very first page, and I just wanna bring this to your attention. I, I don't know how to explain it away, but maybe somebody could help me. The, the latest copy of the general fund revenues shows a beginning fund balance of, I'm just gonna round things off, two point one million dollars. But when you look at the earlier versions of the general fund revenues, that beginning fund balance is one point four million dollars. So I was unable to explain why we have a difference in that fund balance when I, I don't understand how the fund balance would be changing from year to year yet. I, I don't understand why, why that fund balance changed. So that's, that's just one of my questions. Um, I did wanna note, I did not vote for this budget, and wasn't here for the final vote, wouldn't have voted for it, but the proposed two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen budget does not balance, as noted by someone on council. And I think that you need to look, when you are approving budgets, you need to look at all years that are presented for your approval, not just the current year in which you were being asked to appropriate. So what council did was they approved a budget that has a very significant deficit in it, and there is no plan in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen to cure that deficit. There were no cuts done to the two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget. There's that. So I wanna notice that. Also wanna notice on the millage and assessed valuation comparison, this is the new sheet. On the new sheet, I'm looking down at building authority land acquisition, and you'll look at proposed two thousand seventeen and eighteen, where the monies are ninety-eight thousand, and then the proposed in two thousand eighteen, nineteen is almost ninety-eight, hundred and eight, is almost eleven thousand dollars more. I did not see where there was an adjustment of the mill to take care of that building land acquisition. So I'm just bringing that to your attention, that if there is debt servicing there, the mill for that may have to be adjusted. I did notice on four oh one capital improvement fund on the revenues, it is showing for proposed two thousand seventeen, eighteen. I just wanted to know if you could just, in a broad brush, it's showing total expenditures for capital improvement of about seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars. What exactly is totaling those expenditures and capital improvements? Is that, what, what does that include?
I believe four hundred thousand of that is a transfer out to local streets for the Hagedorn project.
How would I have known that, looking at this capital improvement sheet? How, how do I know that? I, I'm just, I just wanna learn. So I wanna know, how could I have done this independent of asking the question to you? How would I have known where to go in here to document the seven thirty-one expenditures?
I could've done a better job of putting a director that it was a transfer, that there was funds transferring out to local streets.
That, that's kind of important. Um, you know, that's a, you know, I mean, working on municipal budgets are hard, but that's kind of an important thing, is to know, particularly when you have mills that are attached to capital improvements. And I do believe we have a mill, correct, for capital improvement?
There is, yes.
Uh, the taxpayer probably is gonna wanna know where that capital improvement mill is going. So in order to provide transparency to the taxpayer, I would think that, you know, if the taxpayer had this budget on the website, how would the taxpayer know where its mill is going towards improvement? So that's just, um, something maybe we can work on also. Also, I'm looking at water and sewer operations, five ninety-two. I notice for revenues are less than expenditures on the new sheet. It's just something that I noticed. We can get back to that later. And the other one is the water system bonds. Uh, there was, uh, it seems to be zeroed out in two sixteen, two seventeen. There was a voter-approved millage of point four nine eight five. It's not currently being levied.
The water system was for the water treatment plant improvement. It was paid off in sixteen. And the current DWRF, at the request of the accounting of our auditors, those principal and interest payments are under the direct water distribution revenue sheet, rather than through that separate project fund.
I don't understand the notation, voter-approved millage, not currently levied. Do we have, do we have millage money out there that could've, I, I'm trying to get my handle around that.
I believe it was levied specifically for that water treatment plant, and so therefore, it was a voter millage for the improvements to the water treatment plant. So no, we don't have levy that we're gonna do, because it's not authorized for anything else.
So that came off in what budget year? It would be paid off, it came off in two sixteen?
Yeah, fifteen sixteen.
That's kind of important for council to know. When a, when a, when a mill drops off, council should, well, you know, we should be looking at the budgets and picking up on this. I don't recall seeing this, but that's clearly something important to know when a mill is dropping off, like the mills are gonna be dropping off for the DDA. Because when a mill drops off, that, that frees up some room for an additional increase in someplace else, like capital improvements or general operating, without generally affecting your taxes. Because if you're used to paying a hundred dollars a month, or a hundred dollars in taxes, the, the example is, what do I care how you spend a hundred dollars? So if you change that mill to adjust it, when these mills come off, and you wanna move it to increased capital improvements 'cause you wanna improve Volunteer Park or someplace like that, I don't care how you adjust the mill. I just care about whether or not my hundred dollars is now gonna become a hundred and ten. But this probably would've been an important thing for council to know when the mill comes off. This would've come off in the budget year. So I think we have a lot of work to do on budgets.
When does that come off, Maggie?
It already came off.
It did?
Mm-hmm.
So is that, is that reflective in?
It's point four nine eight five, I think, was, was the number that came off.
Is that reflected on the most recent budget that we have in front of us?
Well, it's reflected on-
But it's not being levied, yes. It, it wasn't levied in fifteen, it wasn't levied in sixteen, seventeen, and it's not being levied going forward.
So you had an extra point four nine eight five that could've been used for something else?
Only by voter approval.
Oh, this was a voter approval millage?
Yes, it was a voter-approved millage.
Okay, alright, that takes care of that. Thank you for answering that.
I hate this format. I would like us to look at adopting a new format for the budget.
I'm working on contacting the county to set up a meeting to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
John, I have a comment.
That's good planning.
I agree. I, this is not a good format.
That's good planning, Lynn. Thank you.
So, so my question is, we, we met several times, and what was it, four times? I don't know. I lost track. But we met several times, went through this, and I was, the last day that we, that we met and was actually voted on, I wasn't, and it wasn't just me, I think the whole process was a little, um, needed some improvement, let's put it that way. 'Cause for example, I use this, and it's just, it's just an example. It's not really even about the police car. But for example, the police car, that the sheet that we received, said that it went from two police cars down to one, and when, when council voted, I didn't approve it, but I voted no, but when council approved the budget, I was under the impression that a new police car was there. So I mean, I'm not debating if a police car's needed or not. I'm just saying that it wasn't very clear. So, you know, I, I kinda feel bad for the police department, 'cause I imagine they spent some time banking if they thought they were gonna get a police car, um, you know, probably doing research. It's not, you know, you still gotta get bids, and it's, it's large expense. But that's not the point of my, my, my commentary. My, my question is, I guess for Lynn or for everybody, how confident are we, are you, are we, that what we have in front of us, we received a revised, a budget in our packet, that this is actually reflective of what was voted on, when was, when the budget was approved?
I'm confident of it, based on the input that the council gave, based on the mill levies that the council approved.
So, so, well, I, I kinda wanna disagree, because I'm not confident at all, because I guess maybe it'll bring me to a question. I noticed when we met on five thirty, our resolution that we voted on, the initial paper that we had, at the end, it said, "Resol further that the millage for the entire fiscal year twenty seventeen, eighteen budget not to exceed sixteen point one eight three eight mils." That was our first sheet. And then we had the meeting, and we massaged the budget a little bit. And then we had a first printout, which I know is reprinted, but the first printout that we were gonna vote on said, right here, sixteen point six zero seven mils. I, I have it here. We were handed this. So then, um, we noticed that that was incorrect, so then it was adjusted to sixteen point, sixteen point six seven zero seven mils. And that's what was voted on, and that's what was approved.
That's not in the budget. That's not the mill in the budget.
What's in the, well, that's what I was gonna highlight. So the budget itself that we have, this is the most recent that was delivered to us, which I have requested to be uploaded to the city website, which would be updated to the city, uploaded to the city website, 'cause we were told this is final, says fifteen point two three three eight mils. That's quite a difference from the, what was voted on, the sixteen point six seven zero seven. So I don't even, I still don't know what was voted on, and that's why I voted no. That was one reason.
I believe you are confusing, because there is the city mill levy, and then there is the one point four that it, or one point whatever that is added for the library mill, and then another paragraph in that resolution you're talking about.
I have it right here. It's the same paragraph, same language, right before the vote, right before the roll call, right before the motion. It's right before the motion here. It says, "Resol further-"
There are multiple sets of numbers.
That's right, and that's, and I just went through the numbers. And what we voted on does not match what the latest budget is. It's the second to last. I'll hang it, I'll show it from the TV. The second to, actually, what's, third to last, we'll call it paragraph, it says, "Resol," and same here, you can see it here. Um, it's not that funny. It's, this is serious. I'm sure, I'm sure the taxpayers wanna see this.
You know, guys, just let, let Joe finish. Just finish.
Let him finish.
You can hold it up while you're talking.
Everybody just- Okay. Well, then, I will explain it then. So the third to last line, it says, "Resol further that the millage for the entire fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty-eight budget not to exceed fifteen point two three three eight mils." That's what we have today. What we voted on, same section, "Resol further that the millage for the entire fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen budget not to exceed sixteen point six seven zero seven mils."
That includes the district library millage that was-
But it's in the same spot.
It, it, no, it's not. It says, "For the purposes of including the levy of one point four three six nine, and the levy overall for the city will be sixteen point six seven oh seven mils, of which fifteen point two three three eight mils will be used for city operation and debt."
Okay, well, we have four, four different pieces of paper that we voted on, or three that we voted on.
No, you voted-
Well, we voted on, we voted on one, but we're given four pieces of paper. I stand corrected.
Well, I apologize that I was trying to provide you real-time paper copies that evening. I will not do that in the future.
Okay, so my whole point was, I'm just not very confident that what was voted on was actually reflective of-
The only mill levy that changed in any of the funds that we levy mills for was the general operating, and the council voted that at eleven point oh five oh mils. There is three point three mils that were obligated for the wastewater general obligation bonds. There is point five eight three eight for the capital improvement fund, and there is point three for the building authority land acquisition fund.
I'm just reading what was in front of us.
Those funds have not changed. They did not change in any documents this year.
I'm just reading what's in front of us.
And you read the document that I gave you, that is what you voted on.
I had a couple other questions real quick.
Can I speak, John?
Let's, let's, let's keep moving.
She's already spoken. I mean, how about, somebody else gets a chance?
I'm recognizing you Glenn.
I'm kind of curious that this document could be assisted substantially by a concise and accurate narrative about what activities are being conducted with the funding that we're providing. What things are being reduced as a product of having to shed some costs. The, I mean, you have, you have former budgets that you could have used as examples of what the expectation was. You have examples of department heads that are in the existing budget that you could have used as templates. That's the kind, the level of detail and more that is absolutely necessary for us, us to have a real grasp of what the direction is for our funding. I, I'm really hoping that you, you take that to heart because there is no way that any one of us could end up, no matter how long we look through this document, that we could have any confidence that we really understand what we're, what the objective of this year's budget is going to be transformed into whether, except for maybe wages and benefits to employees, but activities and what things are supposed to be conducted with these funds is completely unrecognizable in here. So I, I really hope that you work on that aspect of that as much as you still have, have really not done a very good job with reaching out to people to double check your information. The errors that had been displayed through each iteration of this document. It's already a difficult thing to get through. When you're looking at numbers that don't jive, it makes it almost impossible to make heads or tails. So I really hope that you spend an awful lot more time, not only with a narrative, but making sure that someone else is checking your work. It's very easy to lose sight in your own mind when you're adding and subtracting things. You've done the calculation in your head, so you're assuming that everything is displayed properly in the document. Someone else will clearly pick up on that and, and likely end up giving us something that's a better reflection of what we need to know to, to make judgments. Thanks.
Along those same lines, I, I think the same thing. Sometimes when you look at a document too long, you, you don't see the mistakes because you've been looking at it for too long. You just need maybe a second or even a third pair of eyes to take a look at something and point out the issues with it. The thing that I wanted to say was, aside from the numbers being off, I also think that when you're looking at something, you need to revise it. This is the same letterhead from two years ago. It doesn't even acknowledge the three new members on council. So you have Mayor Galais's name down here, but you have Ted Wallace's name up here. So I know when you're looking at something, just do a quick revise, maybe have a second or third pair of eyes look at it because we want to take pride in our work. This isn't just us who are going to be looking at it, it's going to be the community, it's going to be other communities. And we want to make sure that we, we look professional. Thank you.
I think Glenn hits it right on the head, the narrative is so important, I mean this. Imagine doing your budget at home and you're, you know, and, and you're writing your checks out and you're just kind of just writing your checks out. You know, you need to have something there to explain to them. After a while, you write enough checks, you start to realize what you're doing. As a council, going through a pretty thick, very heavily laced book of numbers, whether you're into accounting or not, your head is spinning. So the, the narrative is so important to help describe a little bit more easier and a little more with clarity that we will understand what we're trying to accomplish. And Joe, maybe your method's different to getting there, but I agree with you. I mean, it's like there's a lot, there's been a lot of change, a lot of changes in the meetings that we had prior leading up to these. Each one we had, we added some things, we took some things out, it wasn't just negotiating budget money.
But can I ask you a question, John? I mean, we, we were told that.
I'm agreeing with you.
And all I know is, no, no, I'm thinking, we're on the same page here and my question is if.
Not used to it, I know.
No, we agree quite a bit, but we were told that we had to pass a budget. Otherwise it was going to be doomsday, it was going to be the sky's falling.
Now, don't get into that, let's just stick with. It's, it's part of my question, I, I don't, I don't shut you down, please. So if the sky was falling, if we didn't pass this budget, we still don't know what was passed. I, I, that's why I asked, are we confident that what was passed? Actually, so, so if we, how we got in this mess in the first place, I'm not trying to point fingers, was we passed the budget, but we didn't pass the mill levy. So we had an invalidated budget, so we were told. So my question is, as I asked last meeting, do we still have an invalidated budget? I don't know. I don't, sorry Maggie, yeah.
I had, I just want to go back to some numbers and, and what's troubling me is the difference in the fund balance. There is a seven hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and eighty six dollar difference in the fund balance from the, the latest revenue sheet and the ones that were out during the budget. During the budget, I, I went through all the paperwork and that fund balance pretty much stayed the same. It was like one point six, I don't know, something like that. And all of a sudden now, the fund balance now has jumped to about two, two point one. So I, I just want an explanation for that. And then how much did you cut in order for this budget, the two seventeen, I mean, the two, yeah, the two seventeen, two eighteen budget? How much was cut dollar wise? Was it three hundred thousand or?
All total?
Yeah.
I would say we cut probably from the initial budgets that the department heads brought to me, over a half million.
Okay, okay. Yeah, because there is a difference in expenditures of five hundred and ninety eight thousand six hundred and sixty five. The problem is, is that that difference did not show up until I looked at the expenditure sheet, the summary of expenditures in the newest budget versus the summary of expenditures in the very last budget that came out just before the thirtieth meeting. So I didn't get the impression that six hundred thousand dollars had been cut in two weeks. That, that's why I was asking, but that's just commentary. I, I think what you have is, you know, if you study these budgets, you can pick it up, it's, it's not that difficult, it's just adding and subtracting. You have a little bit of multiplication in here, it's not a difficult process. I think what it is Lynn, is that you've inherited a budget that may not be consumer friendly. But you, but this isn't your problem, this is something that if council is having a problem understanding the budget and we need to go to a more consumer friendly budget, then maybe now's the time to do it. But this is not a budget that you created, if you know what I mean. So I think some of the comments that are being directed at you are not appropriate at all. I think it's somebody trying to switch the narrative and not wanting to accept responsibility that there's, has been very little modernization in this town, in this city. And the budget is probably just one more thing to add to the list.
John, that's just a, a false assessment of what the circumstances were. We've never had this communication issue prior to Lynn's coming on board. So everybody else seemed to be able to use, even if this is a clumsy format for the budget to be projected to us with, nonetheless, the information exchange has always been concise and accurate what activities were going to be conducted with that year's budget, whether it was Cook or Murphy. So it isn't a function of somebody trying to, to paint some weird picture that just your, your regular razzmatazz.
But I don't think it's Lynn's fault per se, I mean, I'm pretty passionate about this and I'm upset, but that's because I'm, it's not any one particular person, but council as a whole, because again, council passed something that we don't even know we passed. I mean, I didn't pass it, but that's the point. So, so Lynn, my, my criticism, if I'm seeming passionate, it's not against you, I think it's the process and council as a whole. And like I said to be, you know, before that, really before we, we passed the sky's falling budget on five, what day was it, five thirty, that we should have went back to the drawing board. And that's why we got to make this a serious effort now, because, and I think the main thing we need to do now is really understand if these numbers are accurate, if this budget is a hundred percent accurate, because again, chief, I said, it's just a perfect example that I thought you were getting a police car. It was removed. So what else is missing? I don't, I don't know. It's, and again, it's not your fault Lynn, I think it's council and we should have never passed this to begin with.
I would agree.
Next speaker.
I didn't hear any final actions, I didn't. Any questions? I've got a couple items, any questions on the report?
Okay, I'm just gonna go down my list, so bear with me. For the fourth bullet down, you finished compiling lists of historic buildings, may I ask you, how many buildings are historic?
I don't have that list in front of me. I would say thirty four, thirty five.
That's cool, okay, very, very cool, that's good, I mean, I think just having a historic downtown is so charming to begin with. It's just not something that everyone has.
That actual list, I'm preparing a first year annual report. I, I saw that the fire chief had prepared an annual report, so I am almost finished with an annual report and the exact list will be in that report.
I look forward to seeing that. Is this the list that you are compiling or is this the list that EMU students are compiling?
This is the list that I'm compiling, which will be verified by EMU.
Very cool.
And they'll be looking at the whole city, not just the downtown.
Which I think either way is just good knowledge to have. If you continue going, let's see, one, two, three, four down. An interim, interim market manager has been assigned and is being mentored by a current market manager.
Yes.
What's going on?
Uh, then the market manager that we hired for the beginning of the season, he and his wife were working out of their home as, at a marketing company of their own. It didn't work out, so he sought full time employment and so he received a full time job.
Okay, well, congratulations to him. In the meantime, the interim, is that some of your choosing?
Yes, he's someone that has been involved in the market, his mother and father have both been involved in the market over the years. He does not have a current, he is not currently a vendor and will not be a vendor.
Okay.
We posted the position, that closed out on the twenty third. And the farmers market committee will be reviewing. And certainly the interim manager did apply and is, you know, gonna be part of the interview process.
Okay. My last one for you is, let's see. The next one down, you met with a couple of real estate brokers regarding retail and restaurants for downtown properties. Just wanted to update, how's that going?
Uh, good, they're buildings that will probably change tenants.
Okay.
Buildings that'll be up for sale. Or possibly lease would not be renewed and so it's going good, it's.
It's going in the direction we want.
It's not going fast enough for any of us. But it's, there's a current lease, it's an annual lease on one property. And so she's, the person is possibly not going to renew the lease.
Okay.
And then would possibly sell the building.
So, but this is going, I, I don't mind that it's not going fast. For me, I don't care as long as it's going in the correct direction, in the right direction that we're looking for.
I feel it's going in the, the correct direction and the best we can do.
Great, and that's all I wanted to hear, as long as it's progress, progress doesn't happen overnight, so, thank you.
There are actually three potential locations for current tenant and property owners.
Great.
The one space that I can say is the vacant building, or the vacant lot just north of Lake Street. I think it's the third parcel north of Lake Street on the east. Bill Jarrett is the owner and he's in discussions with potential for building, a building not only in the, in the vacant space, but the small building currently occupied by M's would be removed and a complete new building. Approximately fifty feet wide, two story, hundred and ten plus feet.
All right, all good stuff, thanks Bob.
So mine is the bottom one.
Uh, yes, Lloyd and I met last Tuesday. And we finally feel that we've got a direction, Lloyd, please add anything. The next steps from our meeting that we had with both two representatives from the road commission, that are with the signalization part. Do all the signage and signalization, that part of the road commission. And they gave us these timeframes, do those, are those accurate?
They might even be a little bit conservative, but I think that was probably done, done intentionally.
Yes, we don't want to over promise and under deliver, we wanted to under promise and over deliver.
Under budget.
Now, I will say that back when TIA started the study, Pat Colley told us, Lloyd and I, that he thought they would cover the cost. In our discussion with the road commission, they do not feel that all of the signage that was being proposed by TIA would be necessary. And I just told Lynn this the other day, so I think we're looking at more towards the bottom of two thousand five hundred to three thousand range versus the higher end. Because some of the long range signage, I think, Lloyd, spell me if I'm wrong, would not be necessary. They want to try to do as little signage as possible, but still do the proper signage.
That's correct, that was my input to them based on many years prior discussions regarding the same topic. There was a big concern by past councils and by numerous business people of sign pollution leading up to downtown and in downtown. So one of the things we even discussed was the possibility of putting some signs rather than driving more posts into the pavement was putting arms off of some of the existing posts and having signs overhead to include moving the no turn on red signs possibly to overhead signs. And we also talked about some lane markings and no parking potential signage on Lake Street east of Wells. There's a choke point there as you're heading east, if anybody's parked along the curb immediately east of Wells. And that was actually pointed out to me by council member Kivell. And the road commission saw the problem there, the two reps did. Both professional traffic engineers and said they'd work on that issue along with the other two things.
Now, the, the redundancy signs, are those ones that were going to be in the township kind of a thing, forewarning that there's no turn kind of a deal?
Some communities have as far as three stages.
Yeah.
Distant, distant, and then there's a twelve hundred foot and then a, I don't know, on site. I think we're looking at just two stage Lloyd, or one stage?
Maybe one, but one helpful component of the project would be that any changes would be noted in the the truckers map that is put out annually. And we also discussed the fact that many truckers now have this information available to them on GPS electronically in their cabs. So as, as they're approaching South Lion, they would get a prompt that says, well, when you get to Lake Street in Lafayette and you think you want to make a left turn, actually you're going to Reynolds Suite to make that turn.
Is that, that notification resource, is that typically RCOC for GPS vendors or do you know how that, that whole thing, how they?
I, I do not know, we had more discussion about the actual printed map than we did about
Yeah, right.
electronic version, but they did acknowledge that both of those things would happen.
Yeah, I'm thinking that more guys are going with GPS now than they are with hard maps, but the other thing I was curious about, all these RCOC advertisement signs, did they give you an explanation?
Actually, I, I did ask about that because a council member had asked that question. And we did a little walking tour of the, the lane marking, parking choke point and the four corners. And I said, see this sign, this is what I'm talking about. And actually, that commercial, if you will, for the road commission is printed on the back of their seasonal load limit signs. So instead of offloading and reloading the seasonal load limit signs onto trucks, they leave them on the post and just flip them when they're, when they are in effect.
That's a very small advertisement for the size of that sign.
Oh, yeah, I know it, I was thinking it'd be cooler if it was something that was, if, if we had information that could be transmitted from that sign rather than RCOC's logo. I don't know, I mean.
They'd gladly store their four signs for those.
Well, that's kind of the second, yeah, right, a second alternative.
So my other question, Bob, is the first one on the list, you said it's great that we got three restaurant groups talking. But I get continuously asked and I don't have an answer, I always point them to you or point them to Lynn. We already know we only have one liquor license that's currently available or in the process of not being available, I don't know. But we have several DDA licenses from. But we have several DDA licenses from what I understand and I never know what to tell anybody. And, and I get asked and I point them to you and I point them to Lynn and I'm not sure they even go anywhere with it, you know?
I, I think in my discussions with Lynn and then with Tim is that we do need a criteria.
Yeah.
And, and we've looked at some other communities. Uh, the DDA licenses have changed somewhat. There was a period of time when they were very easy to get and, um, and it was almost ridiculous at how many you would qualify for. Those stay with the, um, the community. They're not transferable. Um, but now the game changed for DDA licenses. It's a little more difficult to obtain one. They're still the least expensive, other than the quota license.
Right.
Uh, they're still around a twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars.
Isn't there a significant amount of work that needs?
But there's a research component. And unless you hire an attorney that already has a database, and we know attorneys that have the database, um, if you were just to hire an attorney, then you'd have to be paying for all that time to do the, uh, the fact it's a requirement that you have to prove there's not another DDA or another standard liquor license available anywhere in the county. It's county by county. And that can be expensive.
So playing devil's advocate, if all three of those restaurant groups wanna open a restaurant.
Well, in this case, I think we could make a good case where one would do a selection process, probably first one in. They're not gonna come in all at the same time. The first person in, first group, uh, would apply and hopefully, um,
Don't wanna lose the other ones though.
And then we would actually suggest that they go after, and I have already told, I've told them all that they, they need to suggest contacting their attorneys for a DDA license. The burden is on them to do that.
I mean, we went through that before with the other person that came in that was wanting to pitch his business and it sounded like a great idea. The pictures looked good.
Correct.
Conversation was nice, but then it just fell off the table, you know, and it's like, so whether it, whether, whether it was gonna be a good or not, it seemed like it wasn't, but I'd hate to lose. So you've been working with these guys, it seems like, for a while, these groups.
I would say that the timeframe, if, if we're looking if, to, to have a criteria, is within six to twelve months because that's the lead time. Um, all three groups that are looking, the cost is not the obstacle. It's, it's getting the space, getting the building. And so, but I think our timeframe is, is, knowing the three opportunities, it's a six to twelve month timeframe to have a criteria.
I'd like it to be closer to the six so we're protected.
Sure.
Um, you're aware that Tim Hortons is coming to town?
Uh, Lion Township.
Yeah, it's Lion, well, it's right down on Pontiac Trail. I know a lot of people.
Yep, down by Aubrey's. Yep.
A lot of people are really excited about it, so, um, don't encourage any coffee shops in downtown. Um, Tim Hortons is, Tim Hortons is going to, um, this is gonna be, I, I, this is gonna be big. This is big for the area, so. And it's right next to Aubrey's, so you've got just a great traffic with, um, that traffic. You think the traffic on Pontiac Trail is backed up now, way that Tim Hortons gets in? Uh, that's gonna, that's huge. Um, additionally, um, I kinda wanna stay on, on advocating for the downtown. Um, and I found it interesting, uh, these are just my opinions, uh, that we found money, uh, to pay vacation pay tonight, um, but we weren't able to find money for the facade grant. And, and, and I am again going to emphasize that the city needs to make an investment in the downtown. The facade grant, uh, would have been a, uh, a definite, definite investment in the downtown. Is that, you know, we go to this vision planning session and we're already losing that vision. Uh, you know, we're putting the downtown off a little bit. It's, it's not as much as a priority as it was. You don't have an article in the Free Press and think that your job is done. Uh, that, that, that doesn't even touch it. You know, so you get a little bit of a blurb in a paper. That doesn't mean that you have engaged in transformative conduct to transform what you need to do. And transforming that downtown is an economic engine. And I don't think everybody on this council gets it. Is that you have to make that downtown into its own viable economic engine. And doing that means you have to solve all the pieces of the puzzle, one of which is, is how does your downtown look? If your downtown doesn't look good, people aren't gonna shop. I mean, that's, that's just the bottom line. So, um, I would like to encourage council to, uh, continue focusing on the downtown. Um, the money approved tonight, I'm sure we could've gone into the next budget and we could've found it. Um, but, uh, some members of council dropped the ball and we do not have a facade grant for our downtown. Um, one thing I do wanna say is I had an opportunity, I got a phone call to look into the Detroit Free Press and, uh, it was dated June fourteenth. This was a business owner in the downtown that tipped me off to this. And, uh, it's a program to give small Detroit neighborhoods businesses help with facade improvements. So for those of you that think that this goes to, into the pockets of your private businesses, that's a, an extremely archaic way of looking at, um, how you are gonna boost the economic activity in your downtown. A new program aimed at helping existing neighborhood, uh, businesses who weathered the city's hard-hit economy was announced Wednesday by Mayor Duggan and the Detroit Economic Growth Corporation. I'm just gonna highlight some areas. Motor City Match will provide up to half a million dollars every three months in matching grants to business owners and their landlords for facades and other exterior improvements. Officials said the program is designed to give business owners and commercial landlords a chance to improve the appearance of their building. The matching grants will also be available for design and architectural projects. Multiple businesses applying as a group are eligible for seventy-five percent matching grants. Up to twenty matching grants are expected to be awarded each quarter. Um, so, once again, South Lion comes on the short stick. And, uh, you know, congratulations to Mayor Duggan. He understands. The Economic Development Corporation in Detroit understands. They're doing some great things there. You'd think city, South Lion would stand back and kinda take a look at what other communities are doing and, um, make room in their budget. Even one facade, we could've done one facade, one facade tonight. And, uh, city council passed a great opportunity. So here we are, another year, thirty years, thirty years. So we'll just add thirty-one years of fixing the downtown.
I think in spite of not having the facade grants this year, um, smart business people were waiting and they delayed. And I think that, um, right now it's a matter of, there's a shortage of labor out there. So unfortunately, the wait, the wait there is because Mr. Richard Rowe, who has the three buildings, cannot find a contractor, so working hard to.
I can find the contractor.
Well, great. Please send me the information, cause he's trying to find somebody. But we know exactly where we have to be for downtown. Uh, we've taken a year. Usually to build a base is one or two years. I would say we've made tremendous progress. Uh, we know exactly where we need to be. We're not there yet. We know what the issues are. Uh, the issues of two dilapidated buildings, hopefully owned by the same gentleman. Those are things that we can't solve overnight, but we do have some ordinances we need to embrace and move forward on. Um, the norm lot will not go away overnight. Uh, there are property rights. There are the other issues there. I will tell you that we're up on top of those both. And so the, the next action item, in my opinion, is to pursue all methods possible to deal with the two Bonner buildings. And I think we have some options that we need to legally enact. Um, everything else, I think we're right where we need to be. We know where we're going. Um, I'm pleased that everything in my, uh, one-year work plan has either been accomplished or started and I will summarize that in my annual report. But I think we do know where we're going and we're making progress.
No, on, uh, Norm's property. Tim, good time, longtime businessman, been here, you know, done a lot of good things for a lot of people in the community. But the one, the one thing that's been stuck in my craw since November is, I think it's November, is that Explorer's been sitting on the corner with flat tires up against the wall of the bar and hasn't moved. You know, I mean, and it's like, so I know there's a lot of cars like that. And someone took down the pole the other day that was backing cars in or whatever they were doing. And it, it just, to me, when you have cars at a service center that are butted up to another person's business that are there for work, we don't really know what those cars are there for. And if something was to happen, it could go up in flames or whatever it is, you know, I hate to be the worst-case scenario, but it's possible, you know? And it just seems like they sit there for so dang long, you know? And people in the community for years had always told us, there's cars all over, you know? These are just the ones we see. And I know that. We all know that, you know? And it's like, we have to start, this was number one on our list when we had the vision planning session. It was one of the number one things besides the two buildings. And we're, neither one, we passed an ordinance to take care of some of that, but we haven't done anything with it. And we really need to do something now because it's gone beyond being accommodating, you know?
I think if we were to lay out our options, we wouldn't have as many as we think we do with Norm. It's a very difficult legal situation. But I, I know that, I realized I couldn't go in there heavy-handed. I, that I had to have a relationship with Norm. And I think I'm at the point where, and I've now worked my way into having, and I had a half an hour conversation, which is difficult with Norm, cause he's always busy. He's hands-on and he won't give you the time. So we talked, we talked in very definite terms about the future of his corner, finally, about a month ago.
Mr. Mayor.
And, um, and so I think that, um, you know, Norm does not understand how the, the demographics have changed. Um, we talked about a potential development on the next block south and he said, well, that'll probably never happen. And I said, well, Norm, have you looked at the new master plan? Those are just a bunch of pipe dreams. And I said, I don't believe those are pipe dreams. I think this community's changing. There are developers that are seeking us. There are housing developers. There are mixed-use commercial developers that are seeking us out. It's early in the game, but Showstack, Core Partners, they've come here to look around. Robertson Brothers are looking around. Our new master plan, uh, we are marketing the master plan.
You got Singh who's done commercial and
Yes.
and residential and he's all
Yes, on my list.
They're all around us. So he, he's very aware of what's going on here with traffic patterns and things of that nature, you know? And so there's a reason why they're doing that. And then, and the wall used, I've been here twenty-five, twenty-six years, twenty-seven years, and the wall would go up with those business owners and their hair would go up like a cat when you started talking about bringing a restaurant in or bring, oh, we don't want that. And you're right, it, it, the tide is starting to change, but some of us are getting kinda tired of, uh,
Well, the good part though is that, I mean, the, the dynamics of what are going on right now is giving, potentially giving Norm the leverage that he's really been looking for.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's enough interest in that corner that he can get, he can maximize what his return on that building will be.
I asked him point-blank, can I take potential buyers to you? He said, sure. And I said, well, I'm gonna do that a lot.
What did he say when you said a lot?
He said, no one will ever want it. And I said, I think you're wrong.
You need to form a parade of people to go over and talk.
So, I've said this from the get-go, when you first got hired on, my main concern is, I think Norm is a fantastic business owner.
Absolutely.
I have absolutely not a negative thing to say about him. He has fixed my car time and time again, ever since I was sixteen years old. So I just, I wanna be very delicate with all of our business owners, not just Norm. But I think we need to be very delicate in how we approach the situation. Norm is, Norm is a very sharp gentleman. So he knows, um, the master plan and what's going on with it and expansion and what his lot is worth. And I'm not saying that it's, for us to, you know, it's an eyesore, yes, okay. But at the same time though, to me, having Norm as a business owner and not offending Norm and figuring out a way where the city can collaborate with Norm is more important to me than going in and twisting someone's arm or going in and attacking. So I really think this is delicate how we approach Norm.
Absolutely.
And I think it needs to be on a friendly basis. No, I, not that you would go in there guns blazing, but I just think that we need to be delicate with how we approach it. And that's with all our business owners.
I agree one hundred percent.
Good point, Mary.
Always wanted to win-win, you know?
It's always, yes.
Glenn's correct. Were you, are you saying he is a sharp, he is very sharp?
He's very sharp.
And Glenn's correct. He knows, whether he's looked at the master plan or not, he knows that value of that corner.
Sure.
So, at least does not.
And I think it's a great idea to bring buyers, potential buyers to him.
Yeah, and we have an agreement on that, which is great.
Yeah. Yeah, he's a busy man.
I have one other item.
No, 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 go finish.
No, another item is that, I know there's been a lot of talk about the Browns Root Beer. And Gary Fagan was in last week again, and he was at the planning commission and received final site plan approval, which included the materials on the facade. So basically, they were trying to cut costs, cut some corners, and they didn't have the actual architectural drawings. And so they've basically gone back to what was originally presented. Some minor modifications. And those were approved at planning commission. So now he's moving forward.
What's his timeline? Did he say? Or maybe he doesn't have it?
I'm not aware of a timeline.
I don't believe he's given a timeline.
He had mentioned generally the fall.
Yeah.
But I, I haven't heard.
They're, they're ready to go. I mean, they're ready to start working from what I got. I, I was at the meeting and it seemed like everything went pretty well. And Gary Fagan basically said, whatever you guys need or whatever, you know, I'm willing to do what needs to be done. We wanna get this moving, you know? And it looks good. The plans look good. Everybody was accommodating.
Well, two meetings ago, they were still indecisive about the entry on that, that west side of the building and stuff, so I think
They seemed to come to a consensus a little bit.
Yeah, they got that fleshed out now, so.
And my only, my last comment, and I think it was a positive comment, but getting as much press as possible, I think we've just hit the tip of the iceberg. And so that alone is not gonna get the job done. I agree. But as part of the whole process, the discovery of South Lion and the aggressive nature that we're in and the professional nature we're in handling downtown. So the more we can showcase in that in the media, and that media attention's good, and I think we're just starting to scratch the surface. I mean, I think, I know that, um, we'll be back on, on, uh, cable or public television stations for other purposes. There's another TV show that we're gonna be working with under the radar. And so, but we'll always realize that in, in the whole spectrum of importance is just one small piece of the pie.
What I wanna add to that comment is, I forget who, who, maybe it was Joe, someone on city council, I, I don't know if it was the last meeting, the meeting before that, talked about the, the businesses that were coming in and, you know, taking over the, uh, spaces that, uh, had, had been empty. That's nice that they're there, but the, the real issue is the sustainability of their business. So if they can't sustain that business beyond twenty-four months or thirty-six months, then all you're doing is rotating your tent, your, your unrented buildings every thirty-six months. Because if you have a whole wave of new businesses that come in, they can't make it because you don't have the foot traffic, you don't have whatever, then they're gonna be out, cause most of those leases are probably three years. So the, the issue isn't, isn't the puffy stuff. Yes, it's nice, but you really need to understand the basics of economics. And that is, is keeping those businesses alive beyond thirty-six months, keeping them there for four years, keeping them there for five years, making sure that that foot traffic, bringing in the businesses that bring in foot traffic. I mean, right now, I mean, Saturdays, it's pretty nice downtown. Yesterday, it was ghost town.
Well,
I'm just telling you.
Yeah. Well, that's a problem because stores aren't open on Sunday.
Well, I was in Milford. I'm just letting you know.
Right. And those things aren't gonna solve overnight, cause a lot of the people that have been here are hobby-type businesses. If you had to classify them, and they don't know the power of the economics to be open on Sunday yet. And, uh, we don't have the power to mandate that they be open. So they, the new businesses that come in start to get it and they are generally those, and then the others will follow it.
Well, we've moved past the, uh, the notion of stores that would be selling to the unemployed. You know, they were open nine to five when everyone else is at work, so.
And then the, the pedestrian nature of the downtown is certainly, but you're not gonna have that whole pedestrian aspect in the strip centers. And actually, for all of our total square footage, with only four vacant spots, and I, I think there's the ability soon for one of the restaurant potential buildings to take four to six spaces. And, uh, so four or six of those spaces could possibly be filled. But for the size of our community, the number of vacancies is quite low.
It is now.
It's just that right down in the south area, at the Bush's Market area, you've got five or six spaces there. Like, there's two deals pending. Those are mostly all girdam realty. And then up by the Salvation Army, there are three spaces available then. Actually, four, one out by the road. So actually, and you're right, those are tough spaces to fill.
Is Gateway principally filled?
Pardon?
Is Gateway principally filled? Uh, Eleven Mile?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, well, Tropical Smoothies is the last space in there.
Yeah, good.
I don't know what the holdup is. There's not much going on inside there.
That's a good franchise offer.
Yeah, but that's the last. Yeah, but that's the last, that's the last place.
Yeah.
Thank you, Bob.
Uh, I have a couple of comments. So I, I, I'm gonna bring it back a little bit. Now, I think there's, well, first of all, I wanna say, Bob, I've always said this, and I still believe it, that I think you were, you were a great hire, and you're doing great for the city. And, uh, you know, you, you look at where we came from the last election in two thousand fifteen, since we, you've been hired, and it's really been you that's taken everything off. And, um, but what I will say is that I think that there is a danger in over, I know your job is to sell the city, but overselling the city. And what I mean by that is, we need to stay hungry a little bit, maybe, um, not you, but in general, a little bit humble too. Because it's great that we have these businesses filling the empty spots, but again, as I said, how many of those are simply replacement businesses? I think on the list was rehabilitation, what was it? It used to be one rehab place and it went to another rehab, and they counted as the seventeen, right? I mean, it was just a change of different, different company. But that's okay, and I'm all for that, but I think there's something to say that if we keep hungry and saying we need to improve, 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 and we don't oversell what we've developed, it'll keep us trying to progress more. Now, I think Maggie kinda mentioned this, how, um, you know, there's, there's some, or maybe you alluded to it, I don't know. I, I, but I think there is kinda some different mindsets on this council. There's some people that really wanna focus on the downtown and, and maybe it's others who don't as much. And I think we need to stay hungry focusing on the downtown. I mean, just to illustrate my point, there was, uh, a couple of months ago, there was a discussion if we wanna take this downtown discussion off. And, you know, I say absolutely not. I mean, that's, that's because we get, gather all this good information and, and, but, so I'm glad that we're keeping it going, and we need to. John, I do wanna give you a little credit for, uh, the signs. I know that's one thing that you, with the trucks, that you campaigned on and said that you were gonna get it done.
It's so much a campaign.
Oh, you mentioned it and you said it and you followed through, so.
Thank you. Well, we live downtown, and I think a lot of people outside of the downtown hear from other people that it's not a safe place to walk. And it's totally the opposite of what people say. You need to figure it out for yourself and come downtown and walk. Cause I've lived downtown for twenty six years and it's pretty safe, you know? And other than, those trucks are scary as heck, cause we're getting so busy with the amount of work that's going on in both ends of the township. And the township's this direction, I counted about fifteen to sixteen gravel haulers in about ten minutes on Saturday. Just hauling through, you know? And, uh, that was just a very short period of time. And it's like, it's going to increase even more because the township is blowing up with the houses. And as we continue to grow with the work that's gonna be done, it's going to increase two, three, four, or five times over. And that was why I felt it was really important, because it might get lost in all the other stuff. Cause we were told before that we couldn't do anything, first off, that's the other reason.
Yep.
It was, it was Oakland County, we can't do nothing, and none of, you know, I didn't buy into that.
Well, and, and my point is that I think there's some on council that are pushing this downtown. It's, but I think, it may not, may not be across the board, but, um, it's happening. So I think there's good things, I just wanna keep it perspective that there's a lot of work to do. That's, that's my whole point of my story.
And just so everybody knows, I do get excited about economic development everywhere. That's why I'm not just, I mean, I know the focus is downtown, it is my background. But with my general economic development background, I'm in constant contact with the realtors representing those vacancies in both the other areas, north and south. And it's interesting that you want a certain vacancy. Ironically, it's gonna play into our hands possibly with a couple of buildings to shift for the restaurants. So we have to be patient. Ironically, and I'm gonna have a percentage of vacant space, you kinda wanna five percent, maybe a three to five percent vacancy rate to react to things in the market. And we're not far off of that. But, uh, five or six vacancies really shows itself south by Bushes, that, that, that's a problem.
Yep, and Salvation Army.
Good question, thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ralph Lynn.
All right. Manager's report. We have quite a bit going on over the next couple of weeks. As was mentioned earlier in the, uh, meeting, the Safe Routes to School project is actually moving forward. The school district and I have had conversations with the state back and forth, and the schools are moving forward with the non-infrastructure portion of the project right now. That includes putting curriculum together for educational programs, as well as buying structures like bike racks and things like that for the school. The final engineering package was received from the state last week. The engineers have reviewed it, I've reviewed it, all the quantities are okay. And it has been approved, and it is currently set to go to bid on August first. It'll have a thirty day bid window. Construction is starting a little later than we had anticipated, so we may end up pushing the sidewalk construction out. But we're still talking and negotiating with the state on that. This week, I am meeting with members of the Parks and Rec Commission to begin the work of fundraising for Volunteer Park. We wanted to develop a comprehensive plan and schedule with specific goals that different groups can work towards while we're building into one comprehensive overall project fund for building phase one of Volunteer Park. Jazz in the Park this Friday, uh, the band is Brad and Jacob. And that is the next in the series of our free concerts. And just as a teaser, our summer movie series will kick off on July fifteenth with Moana. It's a Disney movie, one of the newest Disney princesses. She is a Hawaiian princess. And so it's a good family movie for all ages. And City Hall will be closed next Tuesday, the fourth. But a reminder to the public, we are open on Monday, the third. And that is all I have today.
Lynn, I, were you able to get ahold of, uh, GFL regarding, um, the trash on Nine Mile?
I was, they did go back for it.
There was more there, okay.
And they're gonna keep an eye on it.
Okay, super. Um, and also I wanted to bring to your attention, uh, the CVS on Pontiac Trail in Nine Mile. If anybody has gone over there, it is absolutely trash. The landscaping looks like it hasn't been touched in, in decades. I went in and the cigarettes in the parking lot looked like they'd been there for years. There was busted up cement on the sidewalk. I actually walked in to see if they were still in business. And then I went down to CVS on Pontiac Trail in Silver Lake, and theirs also was unkept on the outside. So, um, I don't know what's going on with CVS, but they chose to come to this community. They chose to, um, open their doors, and every month they're taking thousands and thousands of dollars out of this community as they come in and purchase their, um, medicines or whatever. And the least they could do is hire somebody that is at minimum wage and get out there and clean that mess up. It's horrible. It is absolutely horrible. And that is CVS on Pontiac Trail in Nine Mile. I have called their corporate offices, I have not received a returned phone call. I did speak to a gentleman who was the manager over there, he would get back with me, haven't heard from him. So, um, I am asking that the city go over, if possible, tomorrow, take a look at it. Everything, their entrance, their exit, their sign, it is an absolute disaster over there. And then I look across the street, you know, Speedway in Lion Township, and it looks nice. And I look at the Walgreen Pharmacy, and that looks nice. And, uh, and then in South Lion, we got this, it, it, it's a horrible, horrible eyesore. It's horrible. I don't even think they have the sprinklers on. They used to have sprinklers on, their grass is brown, um, over there. And I know they have sprinklers on that property, not to mention their flags that are flying all over the place. They got a sign tossed in a bush somewhere. It looks absolutely horrible, horrible. And that's, and that's an entry, because that takes you, I mean, you've got Brookdale and Aubries, and as you're coming into the downtown area, you would think that you would want your downtown, as you are approaching the downtown, it's an approach, is having that corner, it's a high visible corner. Look at it tomorrow. It's, it's disgraceful, horrible, light, it's light. So I would ask that, if you could, if you could follow up on that.
I will do that.
Once again, that's CVS on Pontiac Trail and Nine Mile. I won't go in it till they clean it up.
Council comments, Mike.
Hope everyone has a happy Fourth of July, and that's all I have.
Eric.
I just wanted to say to the fire department, you guys have been busy. There was just a fire last week, Waters Edge. Yeah? Luckily, no one was hurt, right?
Correct.
I don't know what's going on in South Lion, but we've had four in the span of the last year, like major ones.
Yeah, nothing related to each other, just...
Yeah, yeah, but it's just, it's still unsettling. So I just thank you for all that you're doing, and all the other fire departments and police officers and DPW. So, keeping you on your toes. Aside from that, happy Fourth of July. Thanks, guys, have a safe one.
Sure.
Okay, earlier in this meeting, um, we had some discussion about the attorney invoices, and I mentioned that I would be coming back to this because I was kinda cut off. I recall the last time we talked about attorney invoices, actually attorney raises. There was a gavel involved, and the meeting was ended abruptly, um, because that discussion didn't wanna happen. And that's sad. And, and, you know, I, and I kinda have a theme, and it's, and I'll get into it, and it's, it's not, it's that I'm not here to make friends. It's nothing personal, it's nothing, I'm a good, you know, a personal person, I feel. But I'm not here to make friends, and if I'm gonna ask questions, I don't really care if it's going to offend, uh, people personally, because I'm here to look out for the taxpayers, not for my friends on council, which, um, is why. I did ask to have the city attorney invoices brought before us. And let, and let me tell you, uh, it was like pulling teeth just to get those invoices in those packets. So it was, uh, I would say every excuse in the book in order to not get the invoices. So now that we have the invoices, we are receiving them late. And, um, when we ask questions, specifically when I ask questions, there's not answers, even though, um, there's been several months to, uh, review those invoices and have, have answers readily available at the meeting. So with that being said, um, no, it's not, uh, any agendas other than there's a lot of money we're spending. A lot of money we have increased to the Johnson Rosati Law Firm. We used to pay six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars as retainer, seventy five thousand dollars a year. Now we're budgeted, I don't have the exact figure, but we're upwards of a hundred and forty thousand for this coming fiscal year, which I'm pretty sure will blow through every penny. So I'm going to question the invoices, I'm going to continue to. And, um, if I'm gabbled, as I have been before, or if I'm cut short, I will ask the questions during my council comments. So that's kinda the negative that I wanted to get out of the way, now that that's off my chest. It's not really about me, it's about looking out for the taxpayers. But now that it's off, I have gotten that out of the way, I do wanna say, uh, some positive comments, and that is regarding the concerts in the park. I'm very glad to see that we have those concerts. Bob, you guys do a tremendous job. And I know there's, last Friday, there was a huge crowd, it seemed. It was probably one of the largest, um...
Probably close to a hundred and fifty, two hundred people.
Yeah.
I heard seventy, I heard, she said seventy, she counted. Oh, really? Yeah.
It looked big driving by, so I know people enjoy it, so. Those, so those, very nice. So I think it's good, uh, I did see a comment, um, on Facebook, somebody saying that, uh, nice sitting out on their, on their porch and hearing the music. So, um, for the people who are not attending, they can also, there may be, um, uh, people listening nearby. So I wanted to give a compliment on that. Also, um, on Thursday, I had a, uh, I was, had to be in McCatty Park for a meet and greet for our Panthers football team. And first I pulled around to the historic village, and every parking spot was, was filled. So then I turned around and I went through the other entrance by the play area, and every spot was filled. So that new parking lot that we have, uh, that also doubles as an ice rink, I, I do think that was beneficial because it's being used. There was people there. I was kinda, I don't say skeptical, um, cause I was for the, the, uh, ice rink, but I was skeptical if it would get that kinda traffic. And it certainly is getting that traffic, because you have people playing baseball, you have people just going to the park. And, um, it's, it's just a nice thing for a community to have, um, not just the parking lot, but that McCatty Park down there. And all, seeing all the families and the kids running around, um, it, it makes you proud to live in this city. So I just wanted to kinda say that. Speaking of which, uh, to my next point, I wanted to give a small compliment to, um, to the administration of this, of this fine city. With, uh, when we were reserving the pavilion for our meet and greets, um, the administration was very accommodating, helping the team make sure that the pavilion was, uh, was booked, and, um, nice communication. And I'm starting to think of how many different groups there are that try to use that pavilion. And there's a lot of coordination that goes into it. Now, that's just one small example, but it goes to my point of, uh, our administration department, specifically the clerk's office and, and the bookkeeper and, and everybody involved over there, they have a lot of small jobs that go unnoticed. So I just wanted to let you know that, that I appreciate all of it, all of the work that you do. And, uh, I'm, I know the residents appreciate it as well. With that being said, uh, I did also, you know, I'm sure Maggie will comment on this, on the art show. I know this is your, one of your passions, but I did attend the art show. I'll let you elaborate a little more, but it was very, it was tremendous. It was, it's very nice, uh, if you have a chance, please come to City Hall. When, I'm not sure how long it's gonna play, but if you, uh, it's gonna be here. But if you have a chance coming into City Hall, please check it out. It's called the Sustainable Art Show. But again, I'll, I'll, I'm sure Maggie will have some more comments on that. So with that, um, wanna say thank you, thank you for listening to me tonight, and I have had a nice week. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I enjoyed the, I also enjoyed the concert at the park this last Friday. Look forward to the next one. Car show tomorrow, I believe, um, and...
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
I'm sorry, Wednesday.
Correct.
It's not, I thought it was Tuesday already. Maybe it just seemed like it.
Seems like two weeks from Tuesday.
And I, actually, I had an opportunity to take the grandkids over to the, uh, McCatty Park. We had a nice time playing in the structures, and it was well kept up. And, uh, my daughter was with me, and she was very impressed with, uh, the, the facilities in, in general. So with that, I'll say, uh, have a happy Fourth of July, keep the fireworks down around the dogs and cats and animals, and good night.
Thank you.
Yes, um, I don't think anybody on council thought that I would let this go, um, so I'm gonna address it right out. I am, uh, in disagreement with, uh, Mr. Kivell as to his understanding, uh, that his issue regarding his conflict of interest is closed. I don't think Mr. Kivell has an understanding that the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office is not in the business of enforcing the city charter. It's a civil document, and most criminal agencies and law enforcement groups, uh, do not enforce civil documents, um, for anybody. That's what you have your civil courts for. So I would vehemently disagree with, um, Mr. Kivell that the matter is over. It may be over in another month, um, depending on how this council votes. But, but it's not all over in terms of the public. It, it, I listened, uh, at the tape with, uh, Mr. Kivell's, um, comments at the last meeting, and it appears that he is still refusing to accept responsibility for his failure to disclose the conflict of interest. Over the weekend, I happened to be with, uh, some parents and their ninth grader from a different community, uh, close by. And, uh, uh, they asked me where this matter was going, and I said, well, I don't know where it's going. Did not express an opinion, but the ninth grader that was there did. And the ninth grader clearly understood that Mr. Kivell had a conflict of interest. I was showing the Facebook postings that appeared on social media at the time, this was all brewing. And there still was, and there still is some very deep anger regarding Mr. Kivell's conduct. And, um, I have patiently sat back and haven't said anything, uh, except to the newspaper at the, at the last meeting. So when Kivell votes to pass the largest tax increase on the residents in the city and asks the seniors basically to buck up and pay it, and then thinks he's gonna walk away from any level of accountability for his failure to disclose his conflict of interest, then you have some pretty angry residents in this town, not only in South Lion, but you have public elected officials in Salem Township, Green Oak, and Lion Township that are also watching this. The comment that I was most disturbed about that Mr. Kivell made was regarding how does he get his reputation back? Kivell, as to your reputation, it's yours. You made it. You feed it. You are the only person responsible for why people dislike or distaste you. You are the only one. The public and myself only reacts to what... The public and myself only reacts to what you do. Nobody told you not to disclose your conflict of interest. That was a conscious choice that was made by you, and no one helped you, no one coached you, no one encouraged you. Nobody asked you to remain silent but yourself. Somehow, as the public is seeing, the rules don't apply to you, Mr. Kivell. They apply to everybody else. How you get your reputation back is your problem, and it's your business. Although the Oakland County Prosecutor's Office does not believe your conduct merits issuance of a warrant, that does not mean that you did not have a conflict of interest in which you had a duty as an elected official to disclose to council. Let's make it clear what you did. You voted on contracts that benefited your employer. Everybody understands that conflict of interest. So Lynn, I am gonna ask, so please put this on next month's agenda, and let's let the public see how justice plays out in South Lion. Last, I would like to make a couple of comments. Lynn, I think most of the people that I have spoken to, elected officials, feel that you did an excellent job analyzing, analyzing and managing this matter. They felt that it was handled very professionally. I have to thank Mike Kramer, who led the pack in the selection of the law firm that was chosen by council, to review this matter, and I would encourage everyone to read the investigative report, because it is that good of a reading in terms of what a public official's responsibilities are with respect to conflict of interest. The fact that Kivell has already apologized on the record for his failure to disclose convincingly tells me and many others that he understands that he held a conflict of interest that should have been disclosed. If he didn't, then he never would have apologized to anybody. His only regret is, is that he got caught with keeping his secret. So it's possible that Kivell's conflict of interest matter rises not so much as a violation of the charter, but rather as a breach of his duties as an elected official to disclose any fact that could possibly influence his decision on voting. If I am to accept Kivell's denial of accountability, then I suppose that I too am to be excused from disclosing my conflicts of interest. I guess Joe Reesey is also excused from disclosing his conflicts of interest. I believe John Galis is probably excused from disclosing his conflicts of interest, which includes his friends on council. No doubt, Kivell was and will be versed in conflicts of interest. His failure to disclose evidences to me, quite frankly, his repugnant and cavalier attitude that he will decide what rules apply and to whom, and he will decide what justice he gets from this council. So once again, Lynn, please put this on the agenda. I will be asking to move for suspension for no greater than 60 days and no less than 30 days. Next, I'd like to comment on the opening of the Sustainable Art Show. It was absolutely wonderful. We had people here from Southfield, we had people here from all over the place. A gentleman from the Chicago Institute of Art was here. It was absolutely fabulous, and I think I've said this before, is that the Culture Arts Commission is clearly beginning to develop a good rapport with very, very sophisticated individuals involved in the art community, and they're coming to South Lion. Next, I also had an opportunity to hear the outgoing CEO of the MEDC, the Michigan Economic Development Council, on Thursday, and learned all about the efforts of the state of Michigan to continue promoting businesses in Michigan. Heard a lot about the Pure Michigan Campaign. It was a fascinating talk. I was very fortunate to have been invited to this select audience, and found it to be a very, very fascinating evening. And yes, they did talk about facade grants. Next, I would like to talk about the American flag and the etiquette. I'd like to thank Heinemann. They do have a flag that is now mounted on their business, and I'm glad to see that it is lit up at night, because I have driven by when I noticed it to make sure it was lit up at night. As we all know, the American flag does not fly in the darkness. It is raised in the morning at dawn, and it is lowered at night at dusk. And if it does fly at night, it is required that it has a light shining on it. So thank you, Heinemann Engineering, for following the etiquette of raising your flag at night. Everybody, please have a safe, safe Fourth of July. I wanna thank all of you for inviting me into your home tonight, and I'll see you at the next city council meeting. Thank you.
Glenn.
That level of toxicity is just, really just crazy. Wow. I can't tell you how many dozens and hundreds of people I've talked to that are just so sick to death of the vitriol that is displayed in virtually every one of our meetings, the idea that the conflict issue had been taken to the levels that it had, the idea that we would have squandered that amount of wealth, when you're talking about getting facade grants and things constructive that might have been conducted with that money. It's just glaringly weird that you would, you would rail on this thing like that. I was at the Sustainable Arts Meeting, or opening as well, and there's some very interesting stuff there. I was hoping it would be a little bit stronger attended, but it was an awful lot of really interesting and people that strongly cared about that, that type of realm. Some, a lot of artsy people that, you could tell that they got an awful lot of enjoyment out of it, and there's clearly some just monumentally talented people in this area. So that was really a lot of fun to see. And followed up by the concert afterwards. So that was a beautiful night to end up being out in the park. I had a friend that I work with had brought his mother in from Howell. They came to the show, and, and then they just drove around and were impressed with what a lovely city we have and all the accoutrements, especially down by the McCatty Park area and the sand volleyball lot, the concerts, all the kids playing ball, and just people, pedestrians walking around through town. So they got a big kick out of that. I'm hoping everybody has a terrific Fourth of July, and sort of on Harvey's cue, try to be kind to the dogs and cats around here. You know, have a celebration, but try not to annihilate every small animal in the area. Thank you very much.
So a couple of things here. The letters that were written to you, Lloyd, and written to Mike. Mike, didn't have to write these from the fire, and the work that the both departments did, it's seamless, too. Just shows what they care about you guys, and I, and we all know you do a good job. So, but it's nice to see when you're singled out, you know, for actually doing something for the community that a lot of people don't ever see sometimes. Lot of us were at, when they put the shovel in the ground for this, and the dedication and ceremony for the William Pearson Elementary School is gonna take place, save the state, October eighth at 2:00 PM. I'm sure you're gonna hear a lot of information about it. It's gonna be a great school. Seems like as new subs go in, more schools go up. It's gonna be part of the nature of the business out here, which is gonna increase much more I'd like to consider, I have some friends on this council, but that's not my priority. I mean, I have a respect for people. Whether I like you or don't like you, it doesn't really matter. I mean, I normally don't say that to people. And if you consider me as a friend, great. If you don't, okay. But I have a respect for people, and I don't like the nastiness that's been going on for so long. I don't, I don't understand the agenda. So maybe that person or these people can explain what that means at a later time to their friends, constituents. I'm with Mr. Kivell. Glenn, I hear things, but you guys have no idea what I hear. I'm a sounding board. For anybody who wants to be sitting in this chair, careful what you ask for, because you get a lot of bad that comes with the good, and you have to know when to say something and when not to say something. And I hear so much negative that is not related to what people are saying is being related to. I'm sure there's angry patrons out there, and there's people that live in the city that are upset, but there's just as many that are angry, maybe more, than what they're seeing on the behavior. And we're all part of this. So even though you say, "It's you, it's you," we're all here. You know, it's like playing a baseball. I'm gonna use an analogy. It's like playing a baseball game. The guy drops the ball in center field, and they lose the game, and the whole team throws the guy out of the locker room because he dropped the ball. That's not how the game's supposed to be played, unless that guy's an idiot and he, and he's a cancer in the locker room. Then, then it usually takes care of itself. So as a community, I hope you guys pay attention to what's really going on, understand who's respectful, who's not. Not saying people don't bring things, good things to the table, but you need to be respectful to people. And, and the nastiness has got to stop. Whether it stops now, stops next election, whenever, whatever. You know, I mean, it, it's not going to change, the people aren't gonna change their ways. But I'm voicing my opinion, because I've stayed silent, and people are asking me to say something. I could sit here, I had to end one meeting, Mayor Pro Tem's had to end two. I could end a meeting probably just about every night. I could bang this gavel, it's almost 11:00. We would go till 1:00 o'clock in the morning because we argue so much about nonsense, as far as I can see. And when the good stuff is happening, it's really good. But when the bad stuff is happening, it's absolutely taking away from what good is happening. You know, there's this kiss you on the face, slap you on the other side going on all the time, and I don't know what to think. You know, I just wasn't brought up that way, you know? And so people can say what they wanna say about me, and they can say what they're gonna say about you. It doesn't matter. People are gonna laugh in the crowd, people are gonna write things in the paper. You don't have to address everything they say. I mean, when you're sitting on the city council, you could be a baseball player, you could be a movie star, you could be in politics at some level, like Trump. People hate Trump, people love Trump. That's part of the nature of where you're at. You hang your, out there. You take what comes with it, you know? But we're not supposed to be doing it to each other on a daily basis, and I, I think that's just so disrespectful and so unprofessional that I almost don't know what to say at times about it. But there's a lot going on in the city. There's been a lot of good that has happened. Sometimes chaos has to take place for some good to take, to come on board, but I wish people put that into some perspective. And somewhere along the line, we gotta put down the weapons that everybody's using on each other and start really getting to the bottom of things and making things work. Every single person's being called out at some point and then kissed on the face, you know? It's obvious, you know? I mean, and I'm not, and I'm not out of the realm of being the same person being accused like that also at times. I'm not perfect, you know? And, but I try to count to 10. I try to not respond. I try, sometimes I don't, but you can only push people so far. And I'm still not gonna direct my comments, but I think you, people need to be respectful to people in general. And politics is getting uglier and uglier by the day. You just watch it at the federal level, and it's also at the local level. And transparency of government is, is needed, but there's people that are taking it so far, and there's people that just aren't quite balanced and don't understand what that really means. You understand what it means, but you read some of their posts, and you read some of the things that they say, and you, holy smokes. You know, I'd be careful saying anything, you know, about some of these people. You see what's going on in the workforce these days, and what's in, and people getting shot in baseball games, and people, you know? You gotta be careful a little bit. And just be throwing dodgeballs at each other all night long, just irritates people more and more that can't handle the stress. And so I've heard so much outside of here that at times I can't even sleep. And I'm sure Mayor Wallace would, would say the same, because he's told me before that he would filter things. And Mayor Potter used to say the same thing, he would filter things. And John Doyle said he would filter things. I didn't really know what that meant. I do now. So I'm one of a group. I'm not by myself. I can only do so much. I can't meet people like each other. You know, I, I hope they're, this is sinking in a little? Probably not. But that's my stance on this. And I've been silent because it's, I have not known what to say, because it's been, I, I'm not brought up like this. I don't understand it. I've been in business for 20-some years. I'm not a lawyer. I don't fight for a living. You know, I don't argue that stuff. I don't really want to, but I, and I give you guys credit for doing that, because my, my head would probably explode. But I do work with the auto industry, and we have big-time meetings all the time negotiating contracts and negotiating how the work's gonna be done, and it doesn't go clean. But we all respect each other in the room. We may walk out of the room and not, but while we're in the room, we do. And that's the, that's the point I'm trying to make. We can have a difference of opinion. That's fine. That's why we were all elected, by whoever voted for us, and why the people didn't vote for us. So everybody remember that, you know? I, I didn't run for this to get, just to get reelected all the time. I ran for this because I wanted to help. But there's other agendas going on here that I have no control over. Like I said, I could bang this gavel all night, and we'd be here till 1:00. These guys, if they are my friends, they would hate me after a while, because it gets old. My wife does not sit up for me when I get home. She knows when it goes past 11:00, it's time to, because I can't calm down, because I bottle it up, and I don't let it out. And this may be letting it out, but it's not. Some people that know me knows what letting it out really means, and I'm not doing it. So with the holiday coming up, I wanna end this on a good note, and I wanna say, Chief, have a safe, safe holiday. Hope everything is good for you and your guys, and you don't, you don't get called to too many incidents. Mike, you and Mike both, and the guys, same thing. Have a very, very safe holiday. Hopefully, you're not used for anything, and you can enjoy it yourselves. And the rest of the city council, the people that are out there, rest of you guys, happy Fourth of July, and we'll see you soon.